Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. Welcome to the October 8th Town Council Meeting. Sarah, roll call, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Zabriski.
Here.
Mayor Polavy.
Here.
Councilmember Clostat.
Here.
And Councilmember Romack.
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. And if everybody would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the republic, which is holy.
Great, thank you. We're going to move into public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address council on items not on tonight's agenda. If you have anything you'd like to add, please come on up to the podium. Make sure the microphone is turned to green and please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes and we will not be taking action on whatever you choose to address tonight, but we might take a future action. Any public comment this evening on anything not on the agenda? You're all here for other items. Very exciting. This is good. Oh, we have a public comment. Okay. And if anybody else has public comment, don't be shy. You can start right after this gentleman here.
Thank you.
Make sure your button is green.
Copy.
Thank you.
Hello, council. Name's Tony Alarcon. I work with Interro Real Estate. I'm here tonight to talk and to bring public awareness to the Truckee Hilltop Master Plan, which is the area surrounding the Cottonwood Restaurant. I've been working on this project since 2017. The Hilltop Master Plan was approved August the 7th, 2008, 16 years ago. The town of Truckee designed the plan with the Truckee Planning Department and SCO Engineering. This is important as the town had 685 housing units allocated by RENA. The Hilltop represents 295 units, a 60-room hotel and 52,000 square feet of commercial. The 295 units were for the RENA allocation. It seems the town has effectively administered a silent eminent domain, using this master plan to meet the RENA housing numbers with no intent to build the units as proven by the town's actions. The town's abandoned the requirements of the master plan over the last 16 years. Worse yet, the town has clearly prioritized the rail yard development, its low-income artists' lofts and other funds, without spending any money on the hilltop nor funding a roundabout. Why? Page 1-6 of the master plan states that the town does not approve any development in the master plan area within three years of the adoption of the master plan. The community development directors will confer with the property owners to identify possible obstructions to implement the master plan. The planning commission will then meet and discuss with the community development director, its findings and any recommendations for future actions. I submitted a Public of Information Request Act. No information was returned to me. This means it didn't happen. I've hit a roadblock with the town. There is no master plan development agreement, which is an agreement that guarantees repay any landowner any fees submitted. The master plan requires that a $3 million roundabout be built and $2 million to $3 million of infrastructure before any development can be done. I have a landowner that has an $800,000 parcel. He can't sell his land or develop on it. A simple 10,000-square-foot building that would cost $4 million to build, he has to advance $5 million, and the town has not met its actions. Worse off, the master plan not only makes a project pay for the roundabout, it also took the best view lots and the most challenging financially developable lots and maximized the low-income housing on it. I've had one parcel, eight acres, under contract twice to build 100 workforce housing units, and I can't build it because of the structure of the master plan. I'm asking the town council, get this off your bike rack, make this a priority, and let me build workforce housing for the town of Truckee. We need housing here. We don't need more low-income housing for the town employees. We need workforce housing. Help me do it, please.
Thanks, Tony. Appreciate your comments very much. Any other public comment this evening? No? Great. Closing public comment and we'll move into some presentations. We have four or five presentations. And I'm going to ask Jan Holen to meet me up at the podium for the first presentation, please. Wow is right. I'll show you what he was wowing. So I've got Jan Holen here, owner of the Lift Workspace. We're going to do a Small Business Big Applause Award. We've been doing these awards throughout the year that I've been mayor, at least, and we've been doing them for a couple of years prior. Local businesses hold a special place in our hearts. They're run by people who live among us, actively giving back and volunteering in our community. They offer unique services and contribute to the character that makes our town truly special. Small businesses truly enhance our quality of life. As a local business owner myself, I wanted to recognize and celebrate the businesses in our community that make our town unique and special. On behalf of the Truckee Town Council, I'd like to recognize the Lift Workspace with a Small Business Big Applause Award. The Lift has helped move forward our town council's goals of enhancing communication and public outreach to facilitate community cohesion by hosting the town's quarterly Town Talks. Town Talks have become an opportunity for the town to have engaging conversations with our business community in an open and informal format. Hosting these events at the Lift Workspace, in addition to many other wonderful community events and meetings, also contributes to the goal of community connectivity and enhancing quality of life. Thank you to the Lift Workspace for being such wonderful partners with the town and contributing to the advancement of communication, public outreach, and community connectivity. Jan, if you'd like to say a few words, please do.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Polavy, council members and staff. Thank you for recognizing us. We wouldn't be able to deliver community building without our small yet mighty team, including community managers Sun Culpepper and Becca Scott. I can see that you... Can you please stand up at least? Please? Yay, thank you. And I think there might be a photo coming, so you're not off the hook, but we wouldn't be able to... We also want to recognize our great supportive landlords, the Truckee Tahoe Airport District. Our community building is supercharged by around 20 nonprofits. We host in the space, some full-time, like the Truckee Cultural District and Sierra Watershed Education Partners, and others for events and meetings like the Chamber of Commerce, the Town of Truckee, the Roundhouse, Truckee River Watershed Council, just to name a few. And of course, if the Town of Truckee wasn't so community outreach-oriented, we would have nothing to host with the town. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
We're going to take a really quick picture, we promise. So Jan, anybody that you want to join the picture, come on up, and then we'll move on to our second presentation. I'd now like to invite up Sadie Voitlander... Sadie, oh, did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. And Dr. Jim Schlund, are you... You're also here. Excellent. This one will be for you guys. Let me read it. That's what I was doing. So this is a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13th, 2024 is Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 18th is National Mamography Day. And whereas breast cancer is one of the most common kinds of cancer in women, with 85% of breast cancer occurring in patients with no family history, approximately 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer. And whereas, the good news is that many women are surviving breast cancer. If found and treated with early detection from mammograms, there's a 5-year survival rate for 99% of patients diagnosed with localized breast cancer. And whereas, currently there is a 50% reduction in mortality rates from breast cancer due to earlier detection and improved treatments. And whereas, in 2022, Tahoe Forest Hospital District was the first center in California to receive the Hologic?
Yes.
Is that correct? Hologic Artificial Intelligence System for reading mammograms and has performed over 5,000 mammograms in the past year. Through Tahoe Forest, women may receive mammograms with no out-of-pocket costs if covered by commercial insurance, Medicare, or Medi-Cal. And National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer and to spread the word about mammograms so as to encourage communities, organizations, families, and individuals to get involved. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee that October 2024 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, October 13th is Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, and October 18th is National Mamography Day in and throughout the town of Truckee. And I, as the mayor, encourage all Truckee citizens to participate in activities that will increase awareness of prevention and control of breast cancer. Thank you, and please say a few words if you'd like. And here is your proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for inviting us to this event tonight. We really, really appreciate it, and we accept this on behalf of Tahoe Forest. And as the Director of Diagnostic Imaging, I accept this with gratitude and have a tremendous passion for this service line we have at Tahoe Forest. And we are so grateful that we're able to provide it for our community to continue empower to empower women to truly take healthcare into their own hands and follow these screening recommendations to prevent any devastating cancers. So thank you all very, very much. Thank you very much.
I'm just completely honored to be here and to be part of this team. I'm sort of the most visible part of a team that makes this happen every day. And the thing that's different now is that we're actually rewriting the history of breast cancer. When... I'm old. When I started, we were diagnosing breast cancer because we could feel a breast cancer. That meant it was 2 centimeters. It was the size of a golf ball. We now, thanks to high-resolution digital tomography or 3D mammography, augmented with artificial intelligence that reads with us every day, side by side with us. Most of our cancers now are less than a centimeter in size. When you find a cancer that's that small, it actually hasn't had time to devolve and find its way to become a rogue menacing problem. That's something that we can fix as a one-and-done walk away. That means that this isn't devastating anymore. This is actually a celebration when you find something early. And so, right, that 50%, 50% half of all the women who perish, that's preventable now with annual mammography. So I thank you. We're excited to be here. We think this is big stuff. So thank you very much.
All right, Eben, come on up.
Mayor, do you mind if I jump in real quick?
Who's talking to me? Chief Renfro, please. It's weird over here, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So the police department is once again participating in the Pink Patch Project. So to support these efforts, you can buy a really cool pink patch of the Truckee Police Department or other local agencies to support the cause. They're available at the gift shop at Tahoe Forest Hospital, $10 apiece. And then new this year, we have actually a challenge coin for $20 that was done by an artist on the west side of the county. But those are available as well to help support the cause. If you'd like to join us for Coffee for a Cure, which is October 10th, from 8 to 10, at Whole Treat Bakery and Coffee House, we'll be there, and patches and challenge coins will be available to purchase. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Eben Swain, come on up. Our next proclamation is for Truckee River Day, of which Eben is our fearless leader this year, correct?
Nice to see you.
Whereas, the Truckee River, its tributaries, lakes, meadows, and forests are beloved to residents and visitors alike. The Truckee River Watershed is impaired by 150 years of legacy impacts, such as timber harvesting, construction of the railroad, and other transportation corridors, gravel mining, grazing, and dams, resulting in the Environmental Protection Agency in State of California designating the watershed as polluted. And whereas, for 29 years, Truckee River Day brought together hundreds of community members of all ages to work on watershed restoration and protection projects in and around Truckee, reflective of the import of the watershed and environment in our daily lives. And whereas, the goal of the Truckee River Watershed Council is to continue the legacy of Truckee River Day, while completing 50 large-scale restoration and protection projects in the next 10 years, so that even with growth and development, our water will be clean, our meadows and wetlands will still be here, our streams and creeks will have healthy populations of fish and birds and other wildlife, and our watershed will be healthy enough to adapt and thrive in the face of floods, wildfire, and drought. And whereas, volunteer restoration projects will take place on Truckee River Day in Coldstream Canyon, Donner Lake, Truckee Springs, Tahoe Donner, and elsewhere in and around the town of Truckee. And whereas, the Truckee River Watershed Council is honoring the 29th anniversary with events such as the Truckee River Day Fair at Granite Flat Campground, in addition to several restoration projects. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor of the town of Truckee, and I do declare that October 20th, 2024, is the 29th Annual Truckee River Day and Fair, and I congratulate the committed citizens of Truckee who join the Truckee River Watershed Council on this day to protect and restore our beloved rivers and its tributaries. And with that, Eben is going to tell you how to sign up so that you can also show up for Truckee River Day.
Mayor Polavy, council members, thank you so much for having me here. My name is Eben Swain. As Mayor Polavy mentioned, I'm representing Truckee River Watershed Council. And this is on behalf, of course, of the Watershed Council. Our mission ultimately is to bring the community together for the Truckee, beginning 29 years ago, when a few concerned citizens were looking at garbage strewn along the riverway, streambank erosion, et cetera, and asked themselves what they might be able to do to kind of help improve the environment, and expecting 25, 30 people to come out. 400 people came out to join the founding members of the Watershed Council for Truckee River Day. And since that time, we are able to involve and participate 200 to 400 members each year on Truckee River Day for important restoration components, stream stabilization, trail access, habitat restoration, forest health considerations. As Mayor Polavy mentioned, our watershed is fairly heavily impacted. There is continued threat of wildfire. The Truckee River in particular is designated impaired, an impaired water body for sediments. And without the community, without the committed volunteers, every year, we could not even come close to restoring the acreage or the areas that we do. So thanks, everyone. Our website, www.truckeyriver.org, is the place to sign up. October 20th is the day, and registration will be open until October 11th, potentially a few days later, depending on the numbers. We already have close to 160 volunteers signed up, so certainly looking for a few more. We have nine exciting projects this year on many of our partners' land, Truckee Donner Land Trust, California Department of Fish and Wildlife Service, Tahoe National Forest, state parks, et cetera, et cetera. So couldn't do it without our partners or with the community and committed volunteers. So thank you, everyone. And town council, thank you very much.
Okay, back up here. We will now introduce our new Civic Spark Fellows, Lynn and Melanie.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Polavy. Thank you. I am going to introduce Laurel. Laurel, can you stand up? Laurel will be serving a one-year or 11-month term as our Housing and Community Engagement Civic Spark Fellow. Civic Spark is an AmeriCorps program that places AmeriCorps members at local government agencies throughout California, also in Colorado and Washington. And we've been doing Civic Spark here at the town of Truckee for seven years? Six years? Quite a few years now. So Laurel is originally from Colorado Springs, Colorado, and graduated from Gonzaga University in Spokane, Washington in 2023 with a degree in psychology and sociology. During her time at Gonzaga, Laurel worked as the Events and Communications Assistant for the Gonzaga Climate Center, was a trip leader for Gonzaga Outdoors, and part of the Comprehensive Leadership Program. In the time since graduation, Laurel has spent time traveling in Southeast Asia and working as a river rafting guide on the Arkansas River in Colorado. Laurel just recently moved to Truckee from Colorado, and she is excited to get to know the Tahoe Truckee region in greater depth and create a community here. Laurel is passionate about helping people navigate a changing world, including finding safe and affordable housing, and she looks forward to serving the town of Truckee. When she's not at work, she enjoys traveling, outdoor recreation, including skiing, hiking, river rafting, yoga, and doing art. And we are very excited to have her here until August.
Good evening. I'm also excited to introduce Belen. Belen, would you stand up? Belen is also a Civic Spark Fellow, working with us for an 11-month term. Belen graduated from the University of British Columbia in Vancouver in May, where she studied natural resources conservation. And I didn't mention she's working with our Keep Truckee Green team, which is our sustainability division, so we're really excited to have her. She spent the last few winters up in Vancouver, where she spent a lot of time skiing at Whistler. So she knew she wanted to spend some more time in the mountains, which is how we were lucky enough to get her here in Truckee. Belen was born in Amsterdam, and fun fact, the first time she came to the US when she was a baby was to Truckee. So this is a very full-circle moment for Belen. She also grew up visiting Truckee frequently and is passionate about skiing and being outdoors. Belen enjoys running, biking, skiing, and is also hoping to learn to snowboard this winter. She's looking forward to learning more about the internal operations of our mountain town and helping advance our many sustainability initiatives. So please join me in welcoming Belen to our team.
And Belen was out in the field today doing some great plastic water bottle updates for our local businesses. So got to meet her earlier. Thank you. Jen, take it away with the town manager report, and then we will open all of these proclamations and introductions to any public comment and council member comments.
Great, thank you. I do have a few announcements tonight. First, we have our trail survey available on our social media and on our website. If you want to tell us how your trail experience is going this past season, please fill that out. It's open until the 14th, so next week. Next, the week of the 23rd, or on the 23rd, we have a number of events that people are welcome to join us for. We'll be celebrating the new bridge connecting the South River Street over to Del Bay Umaway Park, which is not yet open yet, but celebrating the bridge, the new legacy trail that we worked in partnership with on the land trust, as well as the streetscape project. So that's at 4:00 PM. And it is at the Trailhead on South River Street. So join us in celebrating all those new enhancements. And then following that, you can come right back here to Town Hall. North Tahoe Citizens Climate Lobby is sponsoring a speaker series with Dr. Deborah Hendrickson, and she authored a book entitled "The Air They Breathe." So it's all about the health effects of climate change on children, and that's from 6:30 to 8:00 PM here in Chambers. And she will be doing book signings following that event if you're interested in that. And then lastly, we have Free Medication Takeback Day, October 26th, 10 to 2:00 PM in the Safeway Parking Lot on Donner Pass Road. So we'll have more information about that on our PD website and on our social media accounts. But if you have some medications, hold on to them, and you can bring them to Safeway and drop them off. That's all I have tonight.
Excellent. Any comments from council members on anything we've heard so far? This side? No. Great. Any public comment on anything we've heard so far? Feel free to come on up. Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment, and we will move on to our consent calendar. So thank you all for, those of you who are here, for the proclamations and everything else so far. Item 6.1, we have minutes from September 24th. 6.2, roads acceptance on Sierra Bluff. 6.3, claim for damages against the town of Truckee. 6.4, also claim for damages against the town of Truckee. 6.5, Mills Act Historic Preservation Contract Agreement. 6.6, purchase of two electric... purchase of four electric vehicles, excuse me. 6.7, council authorization to spend up to $90,000 with Mesa EMCOR. 6.8, authorization to execute master agreements and program supplements related to state and/or federally funded transportation projects. 6.9, Dubay Umaway Park. Close. I'm going to keep practicing. Second Art Installation Authorization. 6.10, Corliss Liston Wurst Franklin Lot Line Adjustments and Zoning Code Amendments on Rocky Lane. 6.11, Pioneer... excuse me, Pioneer Commerce Center Building K4, Boat Storage Building Appeal Notice to Abate the Time Extension. And 6.12, the amended joint powers agreement for the provision of a new library facility in the Truckee area. Does any member of council wish to pull anything from consents on this side? No, you guys. No. Staff?
6.11, please.
6.11 you'd like to pull. Got it. Okay. Any member of the public, anything to pull? Great. Seeing none. Councilmember Henderson, can I have a motion to approve our consent calendar, please?
I move that we approve the consent calendar less 6.11.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent carries. Other than 6.11, staff, I'll give 6.11 back to you.
We just have a minor correction in Resolution 2024-43, which is under Section 5. There's still a reference to the original October 14th extension date, and that should be modified to June 30th, 2025.
Great. Any council member questions on 6.11? Seeing none, I'll open public comment on item 6.11. Any public comments? Seeing none. Closing public comment. I'll bring it back to Councilmember Romack for a motion on 6.11, as amended.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the item 6.11 with the amendment.
Second.
And that was Vice Mayor Zabriski on the second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We will move into our discussion items. Item 7.1, Chief Renfro with the Animal Sheltering Agreement with the Humane Society of Truckee Tahoe, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Tonight, we'll be talking about the animal shelter proposal with the Humane Society of Truckee Tahoe. And joining us tonight, we've got Steph Nissler, the CEO, as well as board members and staff. So Steph will have some comments after I'm done here, but we'll go ahead and get started. So the background, I know that we've talked about this a few times, but as far as for the community, we've had this longstanding relationship with the Humane Society of Truckee Tahoe and the town, which was established jointly in 2004. And it was a 50-50 partnership under a 55-year lease agreement for the facility that's out on Stevens Lane. Growing needs since 2004, there's been a high demand, and HSTT wants to expand their services to include, you know, some free pet food assistance, enhanced spay and neuter clinics, medical grants, and more. And increasing, due to the increasing demand, animal sheltering crisis necessitates a new operating model. So some things have changed in the last 10 years. HSTT's new operational model, so the proposed model is that HSTT will function as a privately operated nonprofit under a municipal contract. HSTT will oversee all shelter operations, improving operational continuity, employee morale, collaboration between the town, field services, and HSTT. collaboration between the town, field services, and HST for sheltering. Service expansions will include community outreach, education on pet ownership, and expansion of medical services, like low-cost wellness clinics, as an example. So the financial overview and the proposal terms. Currently, we are, our budget for this fiscal year that we're currently in is just shy of $687,000. HSTT's proposal to provide all sheltering services would be $700,000 with the following conditions. Sorry, I just lost my place. So $700 flat fee through June 30th of '25, prorated monthly, starting January 5th, 2025. A 5% year-over-year increase with CPI adjustment not to exceed 10, so that second 5% will be based on CPI. So an example of that would be if CPI is at 2.5, the year-to-year increase for that year would be 7.5 total, and it would not exceed the 10% ceiling. Town would continue to pay 50% of utilities. And then we would reopen compensation discussions in July of 2027. I know initially, we put in the staff report 2026. We had a conversation with Steph and were amenable to the 2027 timeframe to reassess the cost structure. So some key features here, HSTT responsibilities will be full animal sheltering, including animal care and placement, continued veterinary services, educational and administrative services. Animal licensing fees collection will be retained by HSTT to help offset service costs. And then the town responsibilities will be very similar to what we currently have in the operational agreement, where IT services and building maintenance, and then also, once again, continue the 55-year lease agreement for the facility. The staffing model that HSTT is proposing, 3.75 FTE caretakers. Currently, we have three in the town model. 800 on-call hours, so those are part-time animal caretakers that are on-call hours. We have, in our current budget, 900 hours allocated to that. One administrative assistant for animal services, processing and shelter operations. One animal clinic manager and medical, which is the vet tech that we talked about last time. And one animal teams manager, reporting directly to the Director of Operations. So their total deployment would be 6.75 FTEs. Our current town staffing that we've had is five full-time employees, which includes the vet tech shelter manager, one animal caretaker, two, and three animal caretakers, as well as on-call staff for those 900 hours. HSTT feels that they can enhance community services and expanding local programs to include spay-and-neuter clinics, offering affordable services, wellness clinics with free vaccinations and microchips, behavior and training support programs, ongoing public awareness campaigns promoting responsible pet ownership, with overall goal to reduce the amount of animals needing shelter by supporting pet retention in homes. So our staff transition and impact, so impact to town staff. Current town employees at the shelter can apply for positions at HSTT. Transition support will continue to be provided to assist in the shift of employment with our current employees. Contract execution, the new proposal with HSTT will be executed by January 5th, 2025, to ensure seamless transition and continued shelter operations. Anticipated outcomes of the new partnership, operational continuity with clear expectations and accountability, safe, humane, and clean conditions for all animals, consistent and reliable veterinary care, increased community outreach through educational programs and support services, successful reunification of lost pets with their owners, enhanced animal welfare education in the community. So with that, staff recommendation is that the town council authorize the town manager to amend the current contract for immediate operational needs and direct staff to continue to work with HSTT to finalize and execute the new animal shelter contract by June 30th, 2025.
Is that date incorrect? The June 30th? Aren't you want to execute it by January 5th?
So, yeah, so we will do the, so the contract is a large document. So what we're asking is to approve this, the $700,000 contract, and then we'll come back in, on June in 2026 to have the complete contract outlined with roles and responsibilities.
I think our goal would be to have it in place before, but given that it might, it is going to be complicated, and it might not happen, we're committing to no later than June 30th.
Got it. But operations will still transition on January 5th?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. A little confusing. Great, thank you. Is, are you presenting, Steph? Yeah? Okay. We are ready for you. Please.
Mayor, councilmembers, staff, I'm Stephanie Nissler, the CEO for the Humane Society of Truckee Tahoe, and I have something here to read to you. It's better this way. I stay focused. I am incredibly proud of what the town and HSTT have accomplished together, and I look forward to the next phase of our partnership. The model we're proposing is commonly used across the country because it streamlines operations, which benefits everyone, including the staff, the animals, and the community. Transitioning all shelter operations to HSTT will eliminate the confusion among community members about who does what in the shelter. Most people assume that HSTT runs all shelter operations, and it can be frustrating when HSTT or town staff can't help them with what they need because of our division of duties. Under this model, staff will be cross-trained to support each other better and provide an optimized experience to the public. Additionally, both town and HSTT staff have long dreamt of providing more streamlined approach to outreach services for community members, but our model has made it challenging. With teams that report to two different entities with different schedules and different responsibilities, even though we are morally and ethically aligned, it has been too difficult to accomplish some of the programmatic changes needed to increase how we support our community's pets. Connecting the dots between vaccinations and licensing and spay-and-neuter services at one time will save community members time and money while making Truckee safer and more humane. This will also keep pets in their homes with the people who love them and out of the shelter system, which creates space for the animals that do not have owners or anywhere else to go. As Truckee grows, so does our pet population, so we must continuously evolve our programs to meet the needs of the people and the animals we serve. We truly appreciate the town's continued commitment to excellence in animal welfare. And the Humane Society of Truckee Tahoe is deeply committed to providing the animals and the people we serve with the best possible care. If the council supports this, the town can trust that your local animal shelter will be in very good hands. And I'm here to answer questions if you need me.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. No applause. Excellent. Would that, any council member questions for staff or Stephanie or any of the HSTT staff? Go ahead, councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So I know we have the 5% year-over-year increase for budget plus the CPI. And is that simply based on, I think, in the question and answer, as you said, historically, we've seen 8.5% year-over-year, so we're just kind of extrapolating based on the 10 ye-- past 10 years.
Yeah, that's correct. Over the last 10 years, the annual increase year-over-year has been 8.5%.
Okay. So we think we'll be on target?
We think we're going to be on target.
Okay. And then there's a reference in the staff report, this one might be for you, Stephanie, I'm not sure, to an anticipated delta between HSTT's expected cost and the town's current offer of $700,000. What is that delta?
Yeah, it's about $50,000. But we have really worked, we have like really fleshed this out. We feel comfortable with the number that we've landed on, and we also have a re-opener in two years. And so if we discover that there is a delta that needs to be met, then we'll have that conversation at that time.
Okay. Perfect. That sounds good. And then, last question, the 50% coverage for utilities, that's not within the $700,000, it's just another line item, is that?
That's correct, and that's in line with the contract that's been in place for the last 10.
Okay, that's it. Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Zabriski.
So what we're talking about now is a two-year period rather than a one-year?
Yes, for the revisitation to open up the, for the compensation package, or to look at the numbers of the overall operation cost.
Okay. And then in terms of the 8.5 increase, has that been due to an increase in the number of animal nights at the shelter over the years, or what?
By and large, the primary cost of that is wages, is personnel.
And then we're talking about fees and fines now being retained by the Humane Society. So that would be on top of the $700,000.
That's correct. And the number that we came up with was approximately $52,000. But there is some challenges with that as far as, because the whole goal is to get pets back to their owners. And so occasionally, fees are waived, so that's kind of a soft number there.
Okay, I understand. Is that, would it be going to the Humane Society now instead of the town? Because they would be assuming the administrative burden?
That's correct.
Okay, right. Those are all my questions.
Councilmember Closeau.
No, I think they answered all of, or they asked all of mine.
Yeah.
I just have a quick question. Can you go back two slides, Chief Renfro, to the, one more, no, one more forward? The, yeah, the successful reunification of lost pets with their owners. I guess, I was just more interested in what will change in that whole process, or what will be different or better?
The town does an incredible job reunifying people with their pets, so I don't really know that there will be a great enhancement there. We do have a really broad network on social media, and so we do have a slightly larger reach. And we'll be promoting all of the animals that we're getting through those fruit that are lost that way. And hopefully, that'll help them connect to their families quicker.
Yes, everybody does love pictures of puppies and kittens that you guys post all the time, so thank you. Awesome, appreciate that. We'll open this item up for public comment. Any member of the public, come on up to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name. Feel free. You're all here. You're all here. Nobody wants to support it, huh? Okay. They're comp, I got it. Okay. We'll close public comment, and we'll move back into deliberation if any council member would like to add anything. Go ahead, councilmember Henderson.
I'm actually ready to make a motion. I feel like we had some really lovely comments for you all last time, so I'll just reiterate that I'm really grateful for everything that you do. Thank you for having such wonderful conversations with the chief and with our town manager and really working through this. I know it's hard, so I'm excited and ready to make a motion if you're willing to entertain it.
Anybody else have anything to add before we do that?
I just want to, again, recognize the appreciation of the cooperation and collaboration on negotiating this. I know there were some sticking points, and we made it through. Really appreciate it.
Definitely. Ditto. Go ahead, councilmember Henderson.
Okay, I move that the town council authorizes the town manager to amend the current contract for immediate operational needs and direct staff to continue to work with HSTT to finalize and execute the new animal shelter contract by June 30th.
I'll second.
Nope, she beat you to it. And all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Seeing none, thank you so much. We appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I let it go. I let it go longer. You can keep going, you know, we never get applause, so. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. With that, we'll move into item 7.2 with Mr. Wilkins on the non-town-maintained road snow removal reimbursement policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item is exactly what it sounds like. Really, what staff is hoping to get is direction from you as council as to whether or not you want us to develop this policy. So you're under no obligation to, there's no legal requirement to. It's just a question of, are we at a point where we, as the town, are comfortable kind of taking another step in the direction of funding more road maintenance than we currently do? Little bit of background, when the town incorporated, we inherited the maintenance responsibilities that Nevada County previously had. So when we incorporated, there was about 55 or, excuse me, 155 or 156 miles of roads that the county previously maintained that were within our town limits. There were also another inventory of roads that were within our town limits that the county did not maintain. And when the town incorporated, those roads stayed in that non-maintained status as well. So shortly after incorporation, the council did develop a policy whereby roads could be accepted into the town-maintained network. So any of those inventory of roads that had not previously been accepted by the county would, if they were able to meet these policy standards, would be eligible for acceptance into the town-maintained roadway network or any new streets that were being built as a part of new development. What this did is it kind of clearly established the bar by which developers, subdividers, et cetera, could either choose to design these standards and kind of meet these requirements so that ultimately, the roads could be accepted by the town, or they could choose not to do that and recognize that the roads would not be eligible for future acceptance. So the two basic provisions in the road acceptance standards that were established a long time ago were that the roads need to meet a current design standard and that they need to be in a state of good repair. And I think the thinking behind that was that the town did not want to take on the liability associated with roadways that required immediate major capital investment because they were in poor condition, or that roadways that were going to be extremely difficult to maintain in the long term because they didn't meet the proper standards or had other constraints. So that was one basic provision of that policy. The other basic provision of it was a revenue neutrality component. And what that was looking at, or was and is, the amount of property tax that's being generated along a given section of roadway and whether or not that is equal to or greater than the cost to maintain that roadway. And when I say the property tax, it's the portion of the property tax that the town gets that it allocates to road maintenance. So as an example, you could have a road that meets town standards, it's a half-mile long, that has three parcels on it. And that would probably not meet the revenue neutrality requirements because the, you know, the taxable value of those parcels is typically going to be less than a road that has, you know, parcels that are like on 50-foot frontages where you've got a lot more improvements. So those are the two basic provisions of the town, the current road acceptance standards. So as I mentioned, there's several subdivisions in town that don't meet those current standards. Many of them were subdivisions that existed prior to town incorporation. And then the, and then there's some of those roadways that have been developed since the time of town incorporation as well. So if we were to develop a policy like that, what staff is suggesting is that it be kind of limited to streets that were constructed prior to 1993. I think part of the rationale there is shortly after incorporation, the standards were established by which developers could choose to meet the standards or not. And if they chose not to, that was, you know, that's kind of their decision. Or in the case of HOAs, that's a decision that they may have inherited from the prior subdivider. Part of the thinking is that if it was a pre-1993 roadway or subdivision, kind of before these accepted standards were established, then, you know, maybe there should be some, a provision for some level of reimbursement of snow removal, you know, in those situations. I think another suggestion we would have is that the road needs to be available for general public use. So there would need to be a public right-of-way. Private roads where general public access is not permitted, we would suggest would not be eligible for this. Or roadways that, or areas where they have gated subdivisions, where physical public access is restricted, we would suggest areas like that not be eligible for this policy, if it's developed. We would suggest that there would need to be a legally recognized road maintenance entity. Could be a homeowners association, could be a road maintenance association, basically something that has in-- Basically something that has incorporation documents that identify road maintenance as one of the responsibilities of that entity. And then also proof that that entity is in good status with the State of California Secretary of State. That the, we're suggesting that the Road Maintenance Association submit a five-year plan as a part for road maintenance. We're not anticipating this to be some extensive 10-plus page document. I think it's more summary level in terms of the types of road, you know, we plan on doing snow removal. We plan on doing, you know, street sealing next year. We're going to do pothole patching. If there's any major additional like repaving projects. So a basic description of that, of what their road maintenance intentions are so that we've got a level of confidence that the money that we're reimbursing are, is being invested into that snow removal and/or road maintenance activity. The, and we're suggesting that to keep things administratively simple if we do this, that the kind of annual road maintenance update could be submitted at the time that a entity submitted an invoice for reimbursement for snow removal through this policy, again, if we develop it. The coordination of the snow removal would be the responsibility of the Road Maintenance Association. So we wouldn't be hiring new staff, buying new equipment. The Road Maintenance Associations would continue to be responsible for hiring contractors presumably to do the work. I don't, I'm not aware that there's any of these groups that have their own equipment. But if there are, we would, we could figure out how to make that work as well. And that we would develop a new snow removal specific revenue neutrality provision. So I mentioned before, we've got in our road acceptance policy, there's a revenue neutrality provision that looks at total property tax generation and compares it to total road maintenance and snow removal expense and evaluates whether it would cover that cost. If we're looking at this as just a snow removal reimbursement policy only, that's going to be a different number because it doesn't have all the road maintenance expenses in there. So what we would, what it could do is for some subdivisions that are maybe like two acre lots or five acre lots that currently don't meet the revenue neutrality requirement. With this policy, they potentially would. Because again, that amount of revenue per year generated by property taxes to reimburse the cost of snow removal is going to be less than the cost to reimburse both snow removal and road maintenance. And then that it, that the roads be paved. I think getting into, you know, doing reimbursement on dirt roads is probably something we want to stay away from. I'm not aware that there's many out there that would meet any of the other provisions of this policy. But we do have some isolated pockets of town, like out on airport flats where these, these long things that look kind of like fire roads that provide access to a few parcels. We're suggesting that we're not, that this policy not include those types of facilities. So fiscal impacts, we believe, and we don't know exactly how many miles of roads would, would meet these standards. Because if we set this policy, what would happen is individual road maintenance entities would come to the town and say, hey, we think we meet the standards. Here's the data. There'd be a process to evaluate that. We haven't gone through that process preemptively on every road in town. But we've got a general feel that there's potentially four to five miles of roadways in the community now that would be, that could reasonably meet these standards that we've suggested if we go forward with them. And then we also think there could be an additional approximate four to five miles where potentially they could, where there's maybe not an offer of dedication for public access, where they potentially could organize and create that and, and get themselves eligible. Where there may be streets that are in kind of gated subdivisions where they could choose to remove the gates. And then get those streets to be eligible for this policy. So, so we think there's about 45 miles currently that if we adopted this, or created this policy, that could in fairly short order kind of be in compliance with it. And that there's potentially another four to five miles that over a longer term we could find ourselves being in the reimbursement business for as well. The estimated reimbursement about, amount, so we looked at the five-year average. It's about $31,000, $32,000 per mile of road is what our total snow removal expense is. That's an all-in expense. It includes, you know, equipment, depreciation, labor, fuel, maintenance on equipment, putting in snow poles, repairing, repairing damage that results as, as a part of our snow removal activities. So that's about what we, as the town, have spent per mile in the last five years. The net cost of that is only, is only about 50% because the State of California reimburses us for 50% of our snow removal cost. So using that math, if there were five, let's say there were five miles of street that if we created this policy that met the policy parameters and it costs about $16,000 a mile net to the town. And we did this reimbursement, the reimbursement amount we would be paying would be up to that $31,000 or $32,000 per year. We would then submit that, you know, to the state along with all of our other snow removal expenses, request 50% reimbursement, and then, and then we have to pay the other half. So if, if there's five miles that are eligible, that would net out to about 80 grand per year to the town in today's dollars. If ultimately there were 10 miles, that would net out to around 160 grand per year to the town, kind of on the upper end. The reimbursement amounts back to the HOAs could be up to double that amount. Again, because we're, the net amount to the town is after the, the snow removal reimbursement from the state is factored in. So the proposed process, if you direct us to create this, would be that a road maintenance entity would first have, they would have to come to us. We wouldn't necessarily go out approaching all the different road maintenance entities and saying, hey, do you want to, you know, we'd make it known that this policy exists. But it would be kind of have authority to do road maintenance activities in the area that they're representing. And the second would be to show that they're in a good standing with the, that their corporate status is in good standing. We would suggest, so with our road maintenance acceptance policy, there's a fee that people pay because there's, you know, administrative work that goes into figuring out, do they, do these roads comply with the policy or not? You have to, you know, look at property tax data. You have to kind of do other things. There would be agreements that would need to be put in place. So the idea would be that we would develop a fee. It's probably going to be around 50% of what our current road maintenance acceptance fee would be. So that would be due at the time of request. There would be an administrative review by staff to identify whether or not the streets in question meet the provisions of the policy. There would then be a recommendation to either the town manager or town council. And that would be something we'd need to decide as part of the development of the, of the policy as, as to whether or not to do the acceptance. Our thought was if you wanted to have each of those agreements come back to you as the town council, we could clearly do it that way. Another option would be to do it administratively with the town manager making the final determination. And then making a report out to the council with all the supporting documentation that that determination has been done. So that there's still visibility by the council into what's going on, but potentially less procedural effort, you know, with, with the council's involvement. That would be clearly up to you all in terms of how, how hands-on you want to be. And then downstream, there would be, assuming all of this happened, there would be an agreement that would need to be put in place between the town and the road maintenance entity. And then what the agreement would call for would be submittal of an annual reimbursement request. So this wouldn't be the type of thing where we're making monthly payments to reimburse their contractor. It would be expected that they would be able to carry the cost of the, the snow removal in this case for the winter. And then they would send us a single invoice after, at the conclusion of the winter season for those services that were provided. And then what we would be, and again, that's in the interest of keeping things administratively streamlined. And then we would make those invoice payments. There'd be another check and balance in there that we would kind of put a ceiling on the amount of cost that we would reimburse that would be equal to or less than what it costs the town on a per-mile basis. So that, I don't, I don't think it would happen. But, you know, you, you could have a road maintenance association that wants to contract for all the road snow removal and do all the driveways at the same time, as a part of the same contract. That's a service well above and beyond what the town provides. So that would be the purpose of having a check and balance in there like that. And then we would make the reimbursement on an annual basis and, and then kind of move on down the line. So there's a lot here. We've put a fair amount of meat on the bones in terms of kind of describing what this might look like. But really the fundamental question is, do you want us to create a policy like this that we would bring back to you for formal adoption? And if the answer is no, then that's, makes this a very quick conversation tonight. If the answer is yes, and we would, we've put forward what we would suggest the policy and the process look like. And if you as the council have suggestions or desires to modify any of those provisions, this would be a great time to hear about that so that when we, if we do come back to you, we've got something that's in alignment with what you're interested in seeing. So again, the recommendation is that you direct us to develop this policy as outlined in the staff report and bring it back to you for adoption at a future meeting. That's it.
Thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate that. Vice Mayor Zbreski, if you'd like to start out with any questions, please do.
Sure. So in a big snow year, then a neighborhood like Pinonee or Donner Lake or the Meadows could go over the cap easily. It incur expenses, they're going to take them over the cap, and then they, they have to figure out how to handle that. Bottom line for them is they receive some money from the town that they're not receiving currently.
Correct, yeah, correct.
Yeah. And then in a neighborhood where the roadways have deeper lots, the cap is going to be higher on a per-mile basis, right? More property, all, all other things being equal?
Yeah, so generally, I mean, land has value, structures tend to have more value. So what we tend to see are large lot subdivisions, you know, two acre, five acre, just can't meet the revenue neutrality requirement currently for both road maintenance and snow removal.
Yes.
Some of those may meet it for snow removal only. And knowing exactly how many and which one of those subdivisions would meet that is, is a little tricky to guess. But, but I could see, you know, Pinonee Ranchos could fall in that category. The Meadows, Glen Shire could fall in that category. Meadows has a gate. They'd have to think about whether they want to keep their gate or get some snow removal reimbursement. So there's, yeah.
So some of them though would have a much greater property area per roadway mile than others and...
And they might not meet that revenue neutrality threshold, yeah.
Those are all my questions. Thank you. Councilmember Rumack.
Two, yeah, just tracking on the dates, this would be any roads that existed prior to 1993, correct? I think in your first slide, it said the policy that the town has in place now was put into place in 1995. Were there any roads that were constructed in 1994 that would be missing?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But we could, we could set the date as 1995 if that's helpful. I don't, I don't think it'll have a, 93 was the year of incorporation.
Yeah.
95 is when we put the first policy in place, so.
Yeah, just in case there was any in 94, I, just something to think about. And then I, on your last slide, it said that the reimbursement would be based on the prior year's annual snow report, I believe.
Yeah, and we could do that, or we could do a five-year rolling average.
That, I was going to ask about average in case the prior year was very low and the current year is very high.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could set it up that way if that's the council's desire.
Okay, thank you.
If, if we, if you even want us to do this, yeah, so.
Councilmember Closeau, go ahead.
When would you expect to bring this policy back to us?
We would hope we could put it together in the next couple of months. And we would suggest that we, we could make it, make roads eligible. Like, so if we, let's say we put it in place in early January, if the council adopted it then and, and told us to move forward with it. We could make the, and then let's say we got two or three applications for it. I think we would have the ability to process that, you know, over the course of, you know, between then and the end of the fiscal year. And if the council wanted, we could make those reimbursements eligible for this coming winter season. If you didn't want us to have them eligible for this coming winter season, we could just let people know that this wouldn't go into effect until the following year, kind of whatever your preference is.
You preemptively answered my second question.
Okay.
Thank you.
And councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I think just two, two and a half questions maybe. So Dan, just for magnitude of policy impacts, we're, we're really talking about approximately four to five miles of what we believe to be currently eligible road if we don't make assumptions about gated communities removing their gates. Is that right?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable estimate for, for fiscal kind of purposes.
Okay. And I guess what are the pros and cons of developing this policy at this point in time? Like, why, why now?
I guess it's really a question of have we kind of evolved as a, as an entity to a point? You know, I know when the town first incorporated, you know, we were very tight on revenue and needing to be very thoughtful about, you know, the types of liabilities and expenses that would be taking, that were being taken on. And I think part of it's a question of, you know, have we grown to a point where we've got the capacity to consider something like this? So I think that's one thing. And then the other thing, which it's, it's not new, but this, that we believe that if we can get this, we can do the reimbursement and get 50%, but as long as the streets are public streets still, get the benefit of that reimbursement from the state, that that kind of helps the overall program in the community. And it brings a little more state money in to help with snow removal expenses, even though they're not currently our, as a, as a business entity's expenses.
Okay.
I think I would just add on there too, that we see the value in allowing these organizations that have set up road maintenance districts or whatever they're going to call themselves, the ability to use their funding to do road maintenance work, storm drain improvals, and have other benefits for their streets.
And then I guess the last part of that question is just, I know we're really, we have a lot of conversations about staff capacity. And we just had that related to the work plan as well. I know we're, we're not talking about probably a lot of formal requests that come in, at least initially. But how much staff time would it take to do the review of, I mean, you talked about a lot of documentation that would be required for the request. So what is the staff capacity lift required?
So we would try to put as much, so in terms of documents that we need to receive and information, we would make that the responsibility of the requesting entity to compile that as opposed to us needing to research that. You know, I anticipate the, it's, some of it will depend on whether you want us to bring it back to you or, or leave it with the town manager with a report out because that's a little more effort. I think we'd probably be looking at, at 20 to 30 hours of administrative effort on each one of these requests that comes in. And I think when we're thinking about it on the staff side, we're also thinking about who would be doing that work. And I think there's administrative analyst capacity as opposed to, you know, we talk about project management capacity and administrative support capacity and whatnot. I think, I think a lot of this would fall into the administrative category where we've got maybe more resource to, to draw from. So I don't think we would be competing by doing this policy. I don't think we would be competing directly with project implementation. But we would, it definitely will still take some effort to implement it.
Right, so if two come forward, we're talking about maybe 60 hours of staff capacity. So it's still a week and a half of time. It's not small.
Right. Right.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, my only question relates to the entities providing the current snow removal. My assumption is that in all of these miles of roadway that you're referring to, they're currently already doing their own snow removal to some extent. And therefore, some entity must exist because there must be some type of common interest or maybe I'm wrong.
I think in most areas, that's the case. There could be some areas where it's just a dozen property owners getting together and deciding to go hire the snow removal contractor, where there's no kind of organized, you know, corporation or road maintenance association to do that.
Got it. And so we, so I guess that would be the case where some extra lift would be required from those property owners versus an existing HOA.
Yeah.
Which is already kind of managing some of that stuff.
Yeah, and we, from a staff perspective, we think, you know, the notion of doing, doing business with an organized entity is different than doing business with a
Five different property owners.
Yeah, that's a kind of a different deal.
No, I, I agree with the direction. I was just trying to understand if it was a group of property owners each chipping in five grand for a season versus actual HOAs. But we don't have that information right now.
Yeah, I think most of the areas have some type of organization that is, that's making it happen.
Okay.
We could have some limited areas that lack that.
And, and basically, as long as they, is it a, some sort of corporate structure, 501X or some type of entity that we're looking for or just some sort of governing documents with a board and decision makers?
I think the, so I'm definitely not an expert in like nonprofit or corporate.
HOA law.
HOA law. But I would kind of, I think in its simplest form, what we're envisioning is an entity that has incorporation documents
Right, okay.
that include road maintenance as a a service that they provide combined with proof that they're in active status with the state.
Great. Appreciate that.
Okay, seeing no further questions at this time, you can always ask some more later. We'll open this up for public comment. Again, we're not talking about specific parcels or properties or subdivisions or anything like that. We're talking about the policy as a whole. And if anybody has any comments on this policy, we would love to hear it. Come on up. You have three minutes. Make sure you just state your name for the record. Timer is to your right or left and make sure the button on the microphone is green, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Vernon. I live at 15320 West Reed Avenue in the Greenpoint subdivision. I've owned my home for 30 years. I've paid money to both maintain the road West Reed Avenue and help provide snow removal. Until about three years ago, it literally was just a group of neighbors getting together and collecting money. There was no entity at all. And about three years ago, we came together and decided it would be good to be, to create a more formal road maintenance association, which we did. And as a result of that, we also reached out to the town to discuss the possibility of some reimbursement for snow removal. I did, we, our board, I'm one of the members of the board of the association and we did submit a public comment. And the fact of the matter is, our, our street is a public right-of-way, but it's unmaintained. It was not maintained by the county. And it was created in a subdivision in the 1920s, a long time ago, and the street really would not be able to meet current standards. It just would be almost physically impossible to do that. So we've been maintaining it, but it's always a challenge to raise enough funds from your neighbors to do the work. And we actually have quite a few people that have refused to contribute. So we have a number of non-contributors. But once we created the association, we did get 22 members to join and we have about another 20 people that are actually paying into the association without having formally joined. So we're up to about 43 people total out of 73 properties that joined this particular street. So I think, you know, we've worked, we think that the outline of the proposal is something that we could work with and potentially qualify for. And the fact that if the town would contribute some money towards the snow removal, that would allow us to devote more of the funds that we raised towards the actual maintenance of the street itself. We've been doing okay with that. And then the drainage structures that go with that, and those are where we've had more challenges. And we'd like to be able to devote more time and energy into that. So help on snow would allow us to do more work on some of these other aspects of maintenance. So I think that's the main thing that I wanted to share. I was a little unhappy that some comments were submitted public comment by some property owners in the subdivision who have not been contributing any money to the maintenance association. And for a reason I don't understand, have objected to this potential policy, which if anything, would lighten the burden of work. So perhaps there's, there's some, some reasons there other than the fact that they maybe just don't feel like they should be paying for anything. So I'll leave it at that. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Vernon.
Jack Cashden. Under state law and under the terms of the incorporation agreement that Truckee signed, Truckee is obligated to make all public roads safely passable and to manage the drainage reaching the roads. This latest proposal is yet another attempt to evade this responsibility and coerce homeowners, specifically the homeowners along West Reed, to assume it. Here are some previous attempts. For years, the town misled the homeowners that the road was private. The town has allowed drainage from Donner Lake Road to runoff under private property along West Reed, twice washing out the road and causing extensive damage to multiple properties. The town repaired the washout with shot rock, which destroyed the tires of multiple residence vehicles. The town offered to deal with this runoff, but only if the homeowners agreed to assume road maintenance through a road assessment district. This was in about 2002. Town is, the town has refused to require TDPUD to restore the dirt road at Bulldoze through the wetland above our subdivision, a road which diverts runoff into previously dry areas damaging properties below. The town has allowed uphill homeowners to fill in the drainage dishes on the uphill side of the west, of West Reed, leading to runoff damages, damage to downhill properties. The town allowed the contractors for TDPUD and Southwest Gas to do the same and refused to compel them to restore the ditches when we complained. The town has refused to work with or compel Caltrans to better manage the drainage through the I-80 culverts. Two homeowners have successfully sued Caltrans for runoff damage, but the town can't be bothered. The town staff has repeatedly met with individual owners who do not represent a majority of the homeowners. This has resulted in the proposed men assessment district, which we voted down, and in the current proposal. The West Reed Maintenance Association has less than a third of the property owners. Some people joined only because they were told that if they didn't, their properties could be lean. But this would be true only if the road were private, which it is not. The town has worked to divide the Greenpoint owners in order to prevent us from taking any unified action. The Road Maintenance Association Board has indicated so far that it is only interested in managing, dealing with the pavement and not with the drainage, which is the far bigger and more expensive problem that we face. The town residents' complaints regarding the town's abdication of responsibilities were confirmed by the recent grand jury, civil grand jury report. The seemingly generous offer by the town will potentially saddle homeowners with ruinous bills to pay for the maintenance projects the town will impose. Managing the magnitude of the runoff problem on West Reed is beyond the capacity and resources of a few homeowners. I would urge the council to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cashden.
I was also just informed that our timer beeper is not working, but the timer is working. The timer's working, just the beeper's not working. So all is a little bit in your court to watch the timer because we can't see it, but if I have to cut you off, I apologize.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sheila Mullins. I am a 35-year property owner on West Reed Avenue. And for 17 years, I collected from the neighbors and provided snow removal for West Reed. I'm in favor of this staff report and hopefully we can work together and develop a plan to help West Reed. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. You didn't need anywhere close to three minutes. Any other public comment on this item? Great. Seeing that, I'm going to close public comment. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation. As we deliberate, I think I just heard a few things that I'd like to mention. One, Councilmember Romack brought up maybe up to 1995, basically, so including 93, 94. If we want to go back on a five-year average or one year, this or next winter, so depending on if we want to allow this winter's reimbursements and then council or manager, town manager, for the approvals if we decide to move forward with this policy. Vice Mayor Zabriski, what have you to say about this, please?
Well, one thing about this proposal, it would, it would not be taking away work from any of our staff. This is not a case of the town contracting out for work currently being performed by our employees. That's an important point for me. The other thing, I certainly go along with the five-year average. That makes more sense given the extreme variability year to year. So I agree with Councilmember Romack on that. I think the big thing for me is, in response to Councilmember Henderson's question, Dan explained why this is coming up now as opposed to when the town incorporated. We've grown. We have the ability to do this. Because bottom line is, we're giving money out to help those few four or five miles of public roadway that are not maintained by the town. And appreciate Mr. Cashden's comments. But Greenpoint can choose to reject the proposal. This is not, we're not talking about binding any neighborhood to any. We're talking about making, creating a proposal that neighborhoods could take advantage of to help defray maintenance and snow removal costs. So I'm ready to move forward with it.
Did you have any comments on any of the other items? Council or manager approval, which winter? Do you want to see it come back to council? Should, for each, each individual project?
I would prefer that it come back.
Okay. You're agnostic on if we allow it to happen for this winter, if staff proceeds?
It's whatever, I don't want to pressure staff on this.
Great.
Flipping the comment by Dan Wilkins, we've waited 20 years. I could wait another year.
Yes. We've waited 21 years. Yes. Councilmember Romack, go ahead.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Vice Mayor. I agree with his sentiment generally on moving forward with the proposal. I'd be in support of a five-year average rather than one year, going up to 94 when the policy was developed. Similar to what Vice Mayor just said, if, if staff can work through this and process this and enable district or agent's entity to be able to utilize reimbursement this winter, I would support that. I am in support of this just going to the town manager. I know it's more work on staff to bring things back to us every time. So I trust if we have a good policy developed, town manager can make that decision and then give us a report on it as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Kloostad.
I concur with all this. I think it's a very well-thought-out policy that has good safeguards, so I, I'm supportive of it. And it's a way to give these property owners some benefit for the property taxes they pay. So it's a good compromise that will enhance access to our community. Yes, on the five-year rolling average, bring it to us when you can. I think if we can make it reimbursable for 2025, I think that would be a real win. But up to you guys. As for when it comes back, I think that I would just like to see the public benefit and knowledge of it coming to a public meeting. It could be on a consent item and with minimal staff report. I know those, I know staff reports are never minimal because I have to write them myself, but I just think it would be, it would be beneficial to the public to see this unless there's a way for the, for this to be vetted with the public on kind of a report out. And then, if I may, I just, I feel compelled to address West Reed for a moment. I just, I really strongly encourage everybody who submitted a comment against this potential policy that could benefit not just their neighbors, but many people in the community to spend the time to actually go back and look at our prior staff reports on this. This issue has been brought to councils and deliberated and researched and, and investigated ever since the year 2000. I know of at least two, probably at least three separate councils that have addressed this issue. And they've all agreed that it is not a road that we can adopt into our town maintenance process. So the last meeting on this was December 10th of 2019. There's a staff report on that meeting agenda, which you can find on our website. And that references prior documents and prior staff, prior meetings being held. You can go watch it on Tahoe Truckee Media. And I really encourage you to do so because this is not, this is something that has been decided and deliberated. And at this point, we're just trying to find ways to help support our community in ways that we can. And that, this policy is that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions and I feel like I, I it's, it's hard when you're talking about policies where you, you feel like you don't have the possibility to make a really big impact. But I think, you know, West Reed in particular is a really good example. It has come up in public comment many times where we do have the possibility at least of some meaningful benefit here for the residents and potentially to the broader community as well. So I will support the policy. I do prefer the administrative review. I don't need every application coming to council. That's just more staff time. This is already going to be a staff lift. This winter or next, whenever staff has the policy ready. Again, I don't want to push staff. I know you have a lot that you're working on. If it's ready this winter, then wonderful, we can get moving right away. And I'm fine with Councilmember Romack's recommendations related to five years and 1994.
Okay, so I think my deciding vote on, it's two to two on council member, council meeting or town manager review. I think I'll, I think I'm going to go along with Councilmember Kloostad on this one and ask for consent. I think that's the appropriate place to do it. I think it is important to make sure that the public is aware, especially for those who may or may not be a part of said maintenance district or however that ends up getting formed, just so that there's a public acknowledgement of that. And that would provide for an extra level of certainty, both for the association that's being formed and for the town as, as we accept or deny these requests. I also agree with everything that's been mentioned. I, and I want to also emphasize exactly what Councilmember Kloostad said. I think you and I have heard this item multiple times in our tenures. And, you know, this is an opportunity, this is a policy for, we received a lot of public comment on this item. And this is a policy where the town is, is doing the best that they can to provide value and provide the services back to, to those who have been requesting it for a number of years and who have been working diligently on these proposals in a way that's, that's fair and in a way that meets a new set of standards. And I think that's also what's important here to, to recognize. So we have this opportunity. I think we should take it. I think, I want to thank our staff for putting it together and putting some thought into it because it's, there is a, an equity issue, especially as it relates to all of our property tax payers. So we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for everybody on this one. So I appreciate staff's time moving this forward. I think you have your So I appreciate staff's time moving this forward. I think you have your direction, staff. We're asking for a formal action.
We don't need a formal action on this, but can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, please.
So if, the intention of bringing back each individual one is to kind of dilate the amount that we're putting back into the community, would you prefer to have a year-end report of what we actually approved versus each individual one coming, where you're not going to get the collective?
Yeah, I think, I think that's sufficient. Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. I think a year-end report, some type of annual report, maybe after the winter, or...
Then we would be able to tally up how much.
Yeah, exactly. Then we know what the budget implications are. It can be part of that kind of conversation.
It would identify the roads and the distances.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate.
And we would put that on consent. So if you wanted to discuss it, you could pull it. But that would, I think, get to what you're trying to accomplish in terms of making it very transparent, how much funding is going into this.
Yeah. And I think then also the other, however many associations end up participating in this type of program, have some clarity on that as well. So I appreciate that, Jen. Thank you. Is everybody okay with that? For the most part, yeah. Great. Staff, you have your direction? You need anything else on this one? Great. Let's, it's, what time is it? 6:30? Let's move on to 6.3, and at the very minimum, we'll get the presentation done, and maybe any council questions, and then maybe we'll take a quick break in the middle of this agenda item, depending on how it progresses. Very exciting. We have the River Revitalization Steering Committee's update and Catalyst Project Request for Interest, and Carissa is on this one. Welcome, Carissa.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Carissa Binkley, Economic Vitality Program Analyst, and I am going to be helped this evening with the presentation by two of our committee members. So I'll mention that tonight, I'll, I'm going to start the first few slides, and then we're going to toss to Jeff Menasco, who is our R2SC Community Economic Vitality Action Team Chair, followed by Joan Jones, our R2SC Chair. So just some background on the river, and it's important to our town. River revitalization is a longstanding town goal. Since the very first Town General Plan, followed by the Downtown River Revitalization Strategy, followed by our current 2040 General Plan, we have reaffirmed over and over again as a community, the priority of revitalizing our river. And where we're going today, we have new development all along West River Street, our legacy trail extension, the West River Streetscape, the new park, Magin Bridge Street, that will be coming up shortly, and the general plan that we recently adopted. As I said, it just reaffirms our commitment to, as a community, towards this river. And I have two slides here that just list over, I'm not going to read through all of them, but there are many, many goals and actions from our general plan that highlight the importance of the river. And finally, touching on the general plan's vision, is to have a revitalize and accessible Trekkie River. In support of that effort, we formed a committee, the River Revitalization Steering Committee. It's a mouthful. So we call it R2SC. And our committee, as you can see on the screen, includes property owners, business owners, representatives from the downtown merchants, the Chamber of Commerce, receiver site parties, which are some of our fellow public agencies, the PUD, sanitation agency, the airport district. We have residents, we have contractors, and we have two of our council members. So our meetings are held regularly, the first Tuesday of each month, at 5:15 in council chambers. They're brown acts. They're completely transparent, open, public process. I'm happy to report that several property owners now regularly attend our meetings as members of the public, which has been wonderful. To date, we've had 15 of our R2SC meetings and another 15 action team and subcommittee meetings. So just some progress updates. We have done extensive, since the last time we updated council on this committee, we've had extensive community engagement. We had coffee chats, taco talks, trailhead talks. We had a booth at Trekkie Day. We did Trekkie Thursdays. We held a special workshop just for residents, property, and business owners, which was wonderful, to hear from them directly. We had an online survey. For those who we didn't get to see in person, an online survey, an opportunity for mapping that was interactive. We reminded everyone at Good Morning Trekkie Rotary, a presentation made thanks to our Chair Joan Jones, to the Contractors Association, to council member Zabriskie, Vice Mayor Zabriskie represented us to Rotary. The Downtown Merchants Association Board heard about the committee, and there were community spotlights on 1015. Our committee also formed some action teams. So we have a River Health and Access Action Team. Under their direction, a baseline study by Balance Hydrologics was formed, looking at the current state health and opportunities of the river. And we have a Community Economic Vitality Action Team, which, under their direction, an economic study of the current conditions of our businesses and properties was conducted by BAE Urban Economics. Additionally, we have a Receiver Site Subcommittee that is working towards identifying potential receiver site parcels. So any businesses that may be interested in relocating off of the river, what that would look like, where they might go to, and where the land may be possible within our town limits. So just some photos representing all that work that was done out in the community, everything from our coffee chats at Wild Cherries to our radio interviews. The bottom left, you can see a photo of some mapping exercises that we had done as a committee. This seems like a simple process. Let's revitalize the river. Let's access the river. Let's make it all wonderful for everyone. But when you actually sit down, as you can see in that photo, it gets rather complicated. And out of that mapping exercise that you can see in that photo, here is an example of a consolidated vision plan. This is nothing set in stone at this point. This is just some of our mapping exercises. We had different groups broken out, and this is a consolidation of all the different pieces put together. As you can see, there's a lot of mixed use. Mixed use is something that our committee is very interested in, especially after hearing from the community. There are some places for restoration and some places for parks, but mixed use is a theme at this point from our committee's work. Our consultant worked and did some concepts of what could be, given what we've heard so far from our committee and from our community. This is just one example, where a little bit of screening, some restoration and slope stabilization could completely transform the look of this and the health of the river in this location. Here's another location where existing adaptive reuse of existing buildings, instead of taking down a complete building, does some, a little bit of infill, enhanced bike and pedestrian connectivity, could completely transform this area. Again, these are just concepts. One more concept, and again, the same, similar concept here of the infill, allowing the existing buildings to stay where they are and adding bike and pedestrians and some pedestrian-activated business scape in the front. I will note that all of these concepts were, we were given permission by the property owners before sharing these concepts. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our Community Economic Vitality Action Team Chair, Jeff Menasco. He represents the airport district as our, on R2SC, and is the Chair of our action team.
Hello, council. It's Green. Thank you for inviting our R2SC Economic Vitality Action Team, and it's been a really fun project. We've been doing this for almost a year. Lots of hard work from everyone. And I think we're at a really interesting time. We've gone through visioning. We've reviewed plans, the town incorporated, in some ways, because of the desire for the river and how to protect it. We've done extensive community outreach. We reached out to the business and landowners, the landowners being absolutely critical in this. And we're at a point where we believe we can begin taking some action. So the slides that I'm going to cover are really the outwork, or excuse me, the work, a lot of the work from our consultant engaging with the landowners. We've met with about 70%. I think we've probably met and talked to just about everyone willing to. We've gone through third-party entities to try to establish trust, to build, to truly find out what that landowner, that business owner's true interests are. Because the community has a lot of grand ideas, but we really need to talk to the people that own the real estate, that have the equity, and what, where are they? So I'm going to walk you through some of that, and then Joan's going to clean up with what our recommendation is. So on this slide here, big takeaways. Property owners desire to make their own decisions on development and uses and don't want to be told. I think that's very natural and quite American. Clear, constructive, and I'll underline the word consistent feedback. There's been multiple attempts at this by the town in the past, and there's some concerns that, is this really going to happen this time? Infrastructure requirements that hinder redevelopment feasibility. There are some issues with infrastructure, electrical easements where certain buildings are, if you were to do certain things with the road, and for the land property owner, what's the impact if we do some of this? The one in yellow, the low overhead and cash flow of existing structures de-incentivizes redevelopment. A lot of the landowners and business owners have been there, particularly the landowners, have been there for a long time. Very low-cost tax basis, and the opportunity for them to make revenue on current, right now, without having to do anything, is strong, and I think is very natural. Concern regarding potential costs, any discovered environmental containment mitigation needs, and potential for pre-development work that does not interrupt cash flow on existing tenants. So if we were to do things and it removed the property out of revenue service generation for six, 12, 18 months for many of these land business owners, that is a significant, it's their livelihood. So on the next slide. So here are some of the conclusions after engaging with the property and business owners. Many property owners are frustrated and/or no longer interested in change. When you talk to them, it strikes me at some point over the preceding decades and years, many of them have tried this before, many, many times. There's been frustration. I don't think it's any one agency, whether it's the county, the state. There's no single entity that has malfeasance in trying to block this. It is complex, particularly with the river, the flood plains. So it's complex. There's a very high level of frustration from a lot of the landowners and business owners, for very good reasons. I'd also say that a lot of them are in a later season of life, and they tried this when they were younger, and then their kids tried it, and now they're in that later seasons. And when they're in that season of life, there's no interest in going for maybe a 10-year project to maybe see revenue in the year 2035. And so there's very rightfully some trepidation. Some property owners along the river are interested and willing to enter into that phase, and they're in that phase of they're willing to try to do something. I think that's important to know. Already mentioned, concerns about the action plan not being implemented, and multiple attempts in the past at this, and how serious are all the agencies at really doing something. And then the next step, what we're recommending, and our Chairman of the R2SC, Ms. Jones, will talk to this, is but working in partnership with interested property owners, business owners on a small number of catalyst projects. Next slide. I think it's important as well to, just to highlight to everyone, and we've mentioned this to business and landowners, that there is investment going on. The town has taken interest. You can see some of the larger events and the capital investments into the river corridor that have taken place and/or are taking place right now. And so with the big thought that there is a change being with some of these projects going on, working with potentially some property business owners with some catalyst projects, this begins to build the momentum for what the river could become. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. So next steps. So at this point in the R2SC's development, we've kind of come to a decision, or would like your feedback on an idea to pivot a bit and to try something a little different. Instead of the idea to just develop a plan, we'd like to go out and really test the waters in the community and in the corridor. So the idea is to develop an equitable and relatively simple RFI, to select three property owners, to work in partnership with the R2SC committee representatives and consultants on initial catalyst planning projects. The Economic Vitality Team, as you just heard, would take the lead on developing the RFI and would come back for R2SC approval, and then will make selection recommendations to the full R2SC. Next slide. We voted, and a motion was made by Jeff Menasco, seconded by Jessica Penman, to move forward with the idea of a catalyst project RFI. Five R2SC members abstained from voting, as they are interested parties. All remaining R2SC members voted in favor of the project. We believe this could achieve momentum and demonstrate a potential for a successful collaboration. It could be a pilot, it could pilot the process of working with property owners and inform the development of a future action plan based on a real-world experience. We really feel the need to go out and see what property owners want, what we can provide, what are the barriers, what incentives work or don't work, what they're interested in, before we come back with a formal plan that really can move forward for the rest of the corridor. So really testing the waters, finding projects that may be as minimal as revitalization or relocation project, or, you know, we don't really know what will come up and who will be interested, but looking at those projects, finding diversity in them, and moving forward. So with that, we have a proposed request for RFI process to seek three property owners for initial collaboration. That would be equitable and simple process designed to identify willing partners, would provide open collaboration proposals involving multiple parties, and focus on partnership and understanding of individual property needs. And then we have a recommendation.
Yes, and our recommendation tonight to council is to receive an update from staff and the River Revitalization Steering Committee regarding the progress of the River Revitalization Project, and to direct staff to proceed with developing a request for interest in RFI, to solicit property owner interest in participating in catalyst projects within the River Revitalization Project area.
And Mayor, if I can just add a couple things for a moment. I want to acknowledge the amount of work that the committee has been doing. This has really kind of grown into a little bit of a life of its own. It's important work, but we've done some pivots. We have a number of action teams that are meeting throughout the month, and so really just want to acknowledge that commitment. Also acknowledge that you're receiving this update tonight because of the pivot on the RFI recommendation. There is a lot of work happening on river health and access. There's an action team dedicated to that. They are working through some draft recommendations. R2SC has heard some of those initial recommendations at the last meeting and was still fleshing that out. So you'll hear more on that piece. I didn't want that to be lost in this conversation, and acknowledge the work that that committee is doing, or that action team as well.
Very exciting. Thank you so much. And could we get a quick show of hands of who's participating in this committee? I think we have a number of you here, just so we all know. Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I know Travis is. Awesome. Well, just on behalf of all of us, thank you all very much. We really appreciate all this great work. It's really exciting, and I think you've come to us at a great time. So we appreciate it, and we appreciate some of the planning that you're putting forward. With that, we'll take some official questions. Councilmember Clostad, you get to go first on this one. Nothing from you. Councilmember Romack, you get to live and breathe it.
I live and breathe it.
You're doing great.
Yes, very informed.
Awesome. Councilmember Henderson?
I think my only question is just, do you have any expectation for timing, once you put the RFI out? Just, you've been working with property owners, like how excited and interested, like how that might move?
So we've just begun the thought process on it. We hope to have an RFI out in about three months, 90 days, and then that would start that process of planning process. And then, you know, where it goes will kind of be dependent on what we get back.
Our goal is, if council directs to move forward with this tonight, we've been thinking through what an RFI might look like. We would get a draft to that, to the Economic Vitality Action Team. Action Team probably by the end of next week for their, or early the following week, but their following, their next meeting is at the end of October 28th, I think. And we've committed to getting them some rough draft of the RFI in advance of that meeting so they can provide comment.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Zabriskie, you also are a participant on this. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think my question is going to be largely directed at staff, and I think more particularly Danielle, but possibly you too, Carissa. And going with an RFI approach, looking for catalyst projects, I'm wondering, how do we address the corridor impacts when we look at an individual parcel? And to give you an example, the River Health and Access Team looks at environmental protection and restoration along the riparian stretch in particular, and that environmental aspect, the geography of that doesn't really recognize parcel boundaries. So looking at one parcel, it could be hard to determine in trying to establish a goal for that parcel, what the impact might be on river protection somewhere else. And we'd have the same issue with circulation pathways, whether it's traffic or internal movement of vehicles, or pathways, or bikeways. We wouldn't want them just being designed for a particular parcel without knowing where they'd go on another parcel. And then things like housing and looking at a particular parcel, if we're thinking about trying to encourage a certain amount of workforce housing, we might come up with a number of units we'd like to see in the corridor. How many do we put on a particular parcel if we're only looking at that one parcel, not knowing what might be contemplated for others? I could go on, and I'm sure you appreciate the problem I'm trying to understand. How do we address it?
So I'll jump in first and then ask Danielle to weigh on. A high-level overview and what we've heard from the action team and discussed at R2SC is shifting to the opportunity of hearing from a property owner what they're willing to do and how we can help find some compromise versus town telling them what we want them to do. And I think a lot of what you're getting at in terms of housing, what we want there, how many units, is us telling a property owner, and we want the property owner to sit at the table with us, or what we're hoping to accomplish, and hear what they're willing to do, and see how we can marry some of our goals and visions with their desires. So don't think we're going to have a full answer to your question, but the points are noted. And then Danielle, if you want to offer anything.
So I think we're looking at this as an opportunity to set aside our current regulations that we have and think about these properties a little bit different. And so normally, we would go through a comprehensive planning process where we would look at circulation, and we'd look at, you know, access, and where do we want trails and bikeways, you know, how are all these projects going to fit together in this sort of comprehensive vision. So it's working almost backwards to take these catalyst sites and consider what opportunities could be. And I look at it more of a form-based code kind of opportunity where we kind of look at an individual property, we're talking to the property owners about their interests, their desires, we're looking at what the town already knows and understands about what the community expectations are for our community vision and kind of blending those together. So I had the same discussion when we were sitting with R2SC committee about, we shouldn't feel constrained by what we have in place. We should look at this as an opportunity to kind of rethink, you know, what we want to see and what's actually feasible with some of these properties, which then I think can unlock maybe some of the constraints that have been in place for so long for us to be able to rethink this area. So planning is a fluid process for us. We always have the ability to go and change the code. We aren't pursuing currently any changes for the river corridor because we know we're going through this process. We're focusing on, you know, Gateway, and we're focusing on downtown and other areas so that this process can unfold and inform what we want those zoning changes to be, what we want that vision ultimately to be. So I think it's, in some ways, a very exciting way to do things because it's not our traditional way of doing it.
So at some point, before we ever made any kind of commitment, we would need to come back and talk about what the overall plan is for the corridor-wide area.
Can I?
If I could offer, as a reminder, our full R2SC will be doing parallel progress while
our action team is diving into the RFI and reporting back to R2SC. Our full R2SC committee plans to move forward with looking into zoning. Our next meeting, we're looking at what mixed use looks like, and if that fits what we want for this area. And so while it's not a parcel-by-parcel plan, it is something that we're trying to look at, an overarching vision for that, for the corridor, without going parcel-by-parcel and piecing it all together.
Right. Jeff, can I ask you just a couple of questions? One is, I'm not sure everybody knows your background. Can you just briefly tell us?
I work at the airport.
Okay.
I'm a resident. I've been here two years. Grew up in Elk Grove, California. Went to Sac State, served in the US Air Force for 28 years, seven months. I moved 15 times, 13 years overseas, nine years in Europe, four years in Japan, three years in Italy, and chose to retire here. Family in the area, foothills on Reno side as well.
In that, when you're describing how many property owners are my age, around my age, maybe older, that-
You're 35?
Yeah, close. The, they just want to continue receiving the income-
They do.
-that they have with the low tax basis. They don't want to spend 10 years, the last-
They don't.
...years of their life trying to do a development. What-
Baked with lots of frustration. And again, I'm throwing those stones, and they don't throw stones, but there's just lots of frustration over decades with lots of them. So they've just kind of got to the point of making really good rental income. I don't have to do anything, super-low cost basis. There's very limited open space in town. So a lot of the businesses operating in that corridor, it's about the only place they can operate. And so you also get a lot of not my backyard. I don't want to do it at the Pioneer Center out in the front yard. I don't want to do it, and here. I don't want to do it there. But these are also vital businesses that are necessary to make a community particularly, you know, high mountain, heavy snow, pretty, you know, for the prior discussion that are necessary.
Do we have any feedback from any of these property owners on simply selling their land and getting an income stream from the proceeds rather than developing the property themselves?
Yes, there are some, but there's concerns because they can't, the way some of the land is zoned for what the value is and non-conforming. If I'm the, I'm not a developer, but if I was the developer, I would have a hard time purchasing the land at current price point. There's also issues with property lines and easements for things that were done in decades past, even pre-town incorporation, that makes selling the land almost a physical impossibility without a lot of work, again, of working through the town and through the county and the county recorder's office, how to work through an easement or a lot line adjustment. And if I'm the property owner and I'm 85 years old, I'm just, I'm not up for that right now.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. Appreciate that. My quick question, Jeff, you might actually want to stay. Thank you. It was just a quick one, into a little bit of the vision behind the RFI. And it's, you know, I have no idea. I haven't been sitting in on your meetings. Hopefully, you have three property owners, maybe you have more. I don't know. But should there be more? I assume you're looking for a variety of both properties, you know, visions for redevelopment, and the RFI is going to flesh all of that out so that we're not looking at, you know, three of exactly the same types of things?
Correct. The intent would be to canvas all the property owners, to let everyone be aware of this. Here's the request for information, looking for three. And I think, as Joan mentioned, whether it's a relocation catalyst project, or it's a property lines project, or it's a housing catalyst project, or it's a river protection catalyst project, I think there's a way to kind of get a variety. And I think with the RFI, as we, the Economic Vitality Action Team, as we bring it to the R2SC, we'd also have a selection framework so it doesn't look as though it's arbitrary and capricious, and that we're just randomly selecting it. So when the RFI went out to the town, it was published in the paper. I'm sure it would go through legal counsel at the town to make sure we're doing this. There would also be a framework for how the selection would be at the same time, so it does not look, again, as it's arbitrary.
Great. Yeah, appreciate that.
Anecdotally, there, we would have, I believe, well over three.
You would?
Yes, I think, I guess, ten-ish to a dozen, maybe more.
Wow, really?
Yes.
Well, fascinating. That's great. Congratulations. That's impressive. Great. No further questions from me. Thank you so much to all of you for presenting and for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. Please stick around just until we get done with this agenda item in case we have more questions. With that, I'd like to open it up to public comment on this item. Please come on up if you have a public comment. Three minutes. My buzzer's broken, so I will personally interrupt you. I apologize. Anybody? Yeah, come on up. Make sure you state your name for the record and hit the green button too, please.
Hi, my name is Jason Toops, and I'm a member of the R2SC Community Economic Vitality Action Team, the body from which this original proposal started prior to the unanimous vote in the full R2SC. Thank you, Carissa, Joan, Jeff, for that great presentation, and Jen, and Danielle for answering some questions. I just want to share a quick note about the origin of this proposal. So the origin of this really came from our theory of change, and I think Jeff mentioned this. We believe that meaningful change at a few select catalyst sites will galvanize change along the rest of the corridor. In the words of Eleanor Roosevelt, "The way to begin is to begin." While other outputs of the committee are very important, such as land use, zoning, and ordinances, we want to also produce an outcome that is not just a map. We're aware that prior river corridor initiatives, including one from over 20 years ago, did produce many such maps, but was unsuccessful in producing the change we wanted to see. So we hope that this RFI process will allow property owners and the town to collaborate in a truly entrepreneurial fashion, to identify what uses could be there that we hadn't even thought of yet, that are consistent with what the public wants to see, and in the end, inform both change that we can happen on these sites, as well as the many, many maps that I'm sure we'll be making soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toop. Toop was your last name?
Toops.
Excuse me. Thank you. Any other public comment? Now is your chance. I'm going to close it. All right. Closing public comment. We'll bring it back to council. Thank you all very much. Once again, your involvement, your efforts, your enthusiasm, truly remarkable, and we really appreciate it. As far as the recommendations go, we've received our update, so that part's done. We're looking to direct staff to proceed with the RFI. Councilmember Clovedad, anything to add, please?
Yeah, I think this is a fantastic next step. I know it wasn't exactly what we were all thinking was going to be the next step, but I think it's a very important one. I'm so impressed with the creative thinking and problem-solving of this committee and trying to make sure that we can actually get started, as Jason just talked about. And the opportunity that this is opening up could also help us in so many other ways in building that collaborative spirit, building a basis of trust. So I'm very excited to see this happen, and I'm looking forward to seeing all the plethora of responses that you're expecting. And then one last time, I'll just add my voice to the chorus that's singing this committee's praises and all of its time and attention. It sounds like it's been a bit of a heavy lift, and so that does not go unrecognized, and we are very grateful, because this is a very important goal of the Trucky 2040 general plan, and I think this community really deserves us being successful in this goal this time. So thank you.
Bless you back there. Councilmember Romack?
Yeah, thank you. I echo Councilmember Clovedad's sentiments. You know, thank you specifically to the action team members who are here, who came up with this plan, as well as the committee members, Travis included, and Joan, who have dedicated a lot of time. This is a fantastic committee that has brought together many different voices. And I think, Jeff, you spoke to it, how, you know, we've got some big ideas and some lofty goals, and Travis has done a great job grounding us in, we also have to think about the property owners. And really, it depends on what they are able and willing to do. And to Jen's point of, you know, this is a really great opportunity to collaborate with those property owners. I think something that I've been really pleased with with this process too, and Jeff, I think you spoke to it a little bit, or Carissa, is the property owner involvement. As our committee has moved on, more property owners in the corridor have started participating and making comments, and I think that's really great, and showing the opportunity that this RFI could put out there with interested property owners. And for those that aren't interested at this time, again, having these catalyst projects showing what a process could look like, maybe will help, again, some of the others look to ways that they can enhance their property as well. So enthusiastically support this. And as Carissa or Joan noted, this was unanimously recommended by the members who voted. There were some who abstained by the committee, so also would want to, you know, go along with what the committee voted in this instance as well.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Vice Mayor Zabriskie?
Yeah, a big advantage over this process compared with the 2005 strategy campaign, which went on for years and involved multiple large community meetings, is the greater involvement of property and business owners in this process. So with their involvement, we need to keep in mind what these, what the grand goals were of river-oriented businesses taking the place of other businesses, trying to achieve greater workforce housing, help solve the housing problem, and then environmental protection and river access. Those were all big aspects of the 2005 strategy. They're also part of this one, but having the property and business owners in a way shows what a challenge the goals of the environmental protection and river access present for us. It is overcoming a certain level, if not distrust, suspicion on the part of many property and business owners, demonstrating that no one is condemning anyone's property. No, it's much, it's much trickier than that. If you're going to get access, a trail, or a park on private property, you're either going to have to pay for it or trade for it. You're going to have to negotiate it, and this process helps us realize it. I am for the RFI because I do see us at a bit of a loggerhead trying to do a grand plan for the corridor. In a way, that's why the 2005 strategy did not succeed. It was operating on the grand plan platform. And so the RFI is the next step. I hope that informs how we can achieve these lofty goals that we started with while actually approving the business environment for the existing businesses. I went by Siramankusso's new empty buildings today. He has a lot of empty commercial space he would like to lease out. I hear there's businesses that don't want to move there, but there are opportunities out there for moving businesses, and in the process, possibly enhancing them. I mean, this could be a win-win situation. That's what I would like to see us try to achieve.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Okay, thank you. I think a very similar sentiment. I get really excited seeing our community innovating and being able to pivot and not being so beholden to our processes that we can't actually progress and do anything beneficial. So I'm really grateful to this committee. I'm grateful to all of the businesses and the landowners who are, who are, some of whom are here in this room, who are participating. This truly isn't about what Town Hall wants. It's about what our community wants. It's about what those landowners and businesses want and giving voice to people who have experienced the frustration that we heard about. And that's really very real. So it's not just the number of meetings. I know there have been so many, but all of the, it's the time and the energy and the creative thinking outside of all of those meetings that I know you're all investing into this. I said this at one of our earlier meetings, but so many people have told me how high-functioning this committee is. I sort of wish I was on it. But all seriousness, I do think this is a tremendous opportunity for Trucky, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what's coming next, to seeing, you know, those catalyst projects, what types of things come out of that. I think it'll also just help with more vision for the community of like what this could actually be. So I'm 100% supportive of moving in this direction. And again, just thank you. I know it's been a huge lift.
Thank you. Basically echo everything that's already been said. I will always sit up here and be a proponent for pivoting that leads to action and distracts us from maps and plans. So I appreciate you all for taking action and for progressing and for really moving this forward in an effective way that you believe will result, will have a result. Excuse me. I think that's, that's pretty awesome. So I support it. I think staff has their direction. I think we're good on this. Thank you all very much for being here, and thanks for everybody's participation on that committee. We are going to move on to 7.4. Thank you so much. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 7:23, 7:23, and we'll come back for 7.4. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're good. All right, we're gonna reconvene. Item 7.4, we have the bed and breakfast in parentheses hosted rental policy discussion, and Hillary is with us for this one. Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, tonight's topic is to introduce a policy discussion surrounding bed and breakfast inns, or what are commonly referred to as hosted rentals. And the purpose of the discussion item is to introduce the topic to council, get direction on whether you would like staff to put in the work to develop draft or to draft potential changes to municipal code on this topic. If directed to do so, we'll then come back at a future date with draft code amendments based on the direction we received tonight. So this is just an initial sort of high-level policy discussion to get that direction. First, what is a hosted rental? A hosted rental is a short-term rental of a single bedroom within a single-family home while the owner is present, and the owner must be a primary resident. During the initial short-term rental ordinance development, the decision was made by council to exclude hosted rentals that meet that narrow definition from the STR requirements and allow the opportunity for full-time residents to do this type of rental to help offset the high cost of homeownership. Per council direction at that time, the definition of a hosted rental was intentionally kept quite narrow because it is essentially, it's an exemption to what is required for all other rental, short-term length rentals in Truckee. And our stakeholders that we worked with to develop that ordinance recognized the need to ensure that this is a narrow exemption so that it didn't create an unintended loophole to the short-term rental requirements that could be used by other types of rentals that don't meet that narrow definition. If a full-time resident desires to rent in a way that is beyond the narrow scope of what's allowed under the hosted rental definition, they can apply for the waitlist and receive a short-term rental registration certificate through that sort of typical short-term rental process as well. This leads into our background of the current regulations. Hosted rentals, as I said, are currently exempt from the short-term rental ordinance, which is Chapter 5.02 of our code. Hosted rentals are, however, are required to register with the town that's a one-time registration for the purpose of paying transient occupancy tax. And just like hotels and short-term rentals, hosted rentals are required to remit transient occupancy tax and the T-Bid assessment to the town. And there is no fee assessed as part of the registration process. So short-term rentals pay an annual registration fee. Hosted rentals have a free registration, and it's a one-time versus an annual registration with the town. Currently, we have 26 registered hosted rentals in Truckee. And although this is not a large number of units, staff have become aware of some challenges with how they are currently addressed in municipal code, and that's the reason for this discussion tonight. So what is the problem we're trying to solve? Why are staff bringing this to council? The overarching challenge that staff have identified is that when a problem does arise with one of the hosted rental units, our staff simply don't feel that they have the adequate enforcement tools to bring properties into compliance. So the three topics listed below are the main challenges that our staff have identified and that staff are recommending addressing through potential changes. The first is advertisement requirements. There are currently no parameters for what is required within the advertisement of a hosted rental, except that it must list the registration number showing that it is registered for transient occupancy tax. That's the only requirement. Additionally, there are no fines for non-compliant advertisements. Potential advertisement requirements would include things like stating that the host will be present during the rental and stating the maximum occupancy of the rented bedroom. Advertisement requirements are an important tool that we use in the short-term rental program to ensure that hosted rental registration is not used in a way beyond the scope of what is intended to be rented. For example, this would help ensure that the hosted rental registration is not being for something that would more appropriately be classified as a short-term rental. The second topic is the suspension and revocation of the certificate, which is the registration. If a hosted rental certificate is revoked or suspended due to a violation, currently, the operator can come into compliance and then can immediately resume operating once that violation is remedied. This has resulted in a few properties in which repeated violations have occurred, and the consequences for the property owner are minimal. So they'll come into compliance, and then staff will walk away, and then it'll come out of compliance again and sort of repeat. In contrast, under the short-term rental ordinance, the holder of a suspended short-term rental registration will not be permitted to renew the following calendar year if the suspension has not been brought into compliance, and the certificate can be revoked. And then if a certificate is revoked, the operator cannot reapply to operate as a short-term rental for a one-year period. In the case of short-term rentals, that actually requires they get on the bottom of the waitlist. There's no waitlist for hosted rentals, so staff are not recommending that piece. But there could be a waiting period after revocation before being able to reapply to the program. With this challenge, it's important to note that addressing a handful of units continues to take a significant amount of staff time of just sort of these repeat citations and enforcement. And because there's no registration fee, these enforcement efforts are currently paid out of the general fund. In contrast, again, to the short-term rental program, in that program, enforcement efforts are paid out of the registration fee by those who participate in the special benefit of operating a short-term rental. And the third of my main topics is penalties and fines. As it stands, hosted rentals are exempt from the fine structure in the short-term rental ordinance and instead fall under the community development code compliance fines, which are significantly lower. Previous council direction for short-term rentals has been to implement a fine structure that would effectively serve as a deterrent, and that has proven to be an effective tool with our short-term rentals. However, we, again, have just a few hosted rentals that have had repeat challenges, and what our staff have found is that the cost of, say, $100 fine is not enough to garner compliance. So staff are recommending that the hosted rental fine structure be increased to better align with the short-term rental fine structure. We did receive one question from council on whether the town has leeway in setting the fine structure. For example, could we set something higher than the current CDD fine structure, but lower than the STR fines? And there is flexibility there. State law does set a cap on the maximum fine for short-term rentals, but we have flexibility under that cap. A few additional challenges that staff wanted to highlight. Again, it's up to council to provide direction on whether you would like to address any of these with hosted rentals. The first is occupancy. Currently, hosted rentals do not have any occupancy requirement, so they could list, you know, occupancy beyond what may be permitted in a short-term rental for a bedroom. So staff are recommending that we consider whether to address that. The second is the review of the designated bedroom. Currently, with short-term rentals, we have a pretty clearly defined process of when we get an application and reviewing to ensure that the hosted or that the listed bedrooms are permitted and meet the safety requirements of a bedroom. We don't currently have that standard for hosted rentals, so that is something that may want to address to ensure that the spaces that are being rented are meeting life safety requirements, egress requirements. And it's, we've had some interesting ones where it's a storage area that is being, we find that's being rented, a converted area in a garage that may not have adequate egress, things like that. And then a final topic to highlight is kitchen access and kitchen appliances, if you will, as well as sinks. The development code was updated in May of 2022 with amendments that prohibit hosted rental bedrooms from having a sink, wet bar, or kitchen facilities and requiring the guests have access to the home's kitchen. These changes were made after the adoption of the ordinance updating the town's short-term rental requirements. Under the STR requirements, we prohibit ADUs or junior ADUs from registering as short-term rentals. So the changes made to development code related to hosted rentals were made just after that to align with this change and prevent living spaces with separate cooking facilities from essentially operating as a junior accessory dwelling unit. The intent was to prohibit those and to prevent those from registering as a hosted rental. Because that was a change made in the development code, we had a number of units that were currently registered as hosted rentals at that time. Right now, we have 21 units that were registered prior to that change in development code that are subject to the previous development code standard. Of these, we, staff are aware, that there are approximately five registered hosted rentals that have either a wet bar or sink in the bedroom, and there are approximately 10 that, in their advertisements, list that they limit kitchen access in some way. So don't meet the current development code standards. So seeking council direction on if we're okay with that sort of grandfathering in, if you will, ones that were registered prior to that 2022 change, or whether there is a council interest in requiring that all registered short-term rentals adhere with the current standards and requirements. Sorry, I might have skipped a slide. There we go. So now we'll segue to the proposed regulations to address some of these topics. Staff are recommending addressing some of these through requiring annual registration and a smaller short-term rental, or sorry, smaller than the short-term rental ordinance, but still requiring an annual registration fee. So what staff are recommending is a registration fee of $100, which, again, would help cover the cost of enforcement and compliance, which currently is borne by the general fund. Staff are recommending, similar to the short-term rental ordinance, establishing a maximum occupancy on the units. Occupancy recommended is two people per bedroom, which would exclude, in that count, children under age 13, which is parallels the STR ordinance, and installing advertisement, advertising requirements for STRs. And again, that is an important piece of the way that staff were able to track and enforce some of these requirements is through what is listed in the advertisement. Staff are also recommending defining the parameters under which certificates can be denied, suspended, or revoked. Recommending applying the kitchen access and the prohibited sink and wet bar requirements to all short-term, or all hosted rentals, rather, and updating the penalties and fines to better align with the short-term rental ordinance. And finally, similar to the short-term rental requirements, requiring that all hosted rentals provide onsite parking for each rental. There are some of the recommendations or some of the requirements of the short-term rental ordinance that staff are not recommending would make sense to apply to hosted rentals because the owner is onsite during the rental. And those include the short-term rental fire safety inspection requirements. And staff have conferred with Truckee Fire Protection District, and they agree that the fire inspection is not essential for hosted rentals, and the trash collection requirements. Because as a full-time resident, the resident would be able to bring the trash to the curb versus necessitating a bear shed in an area where a bear shed may not be required. And then one other consideration that we wanted to highlight for council that you may want to consider is currently short-term, or hosted rentals are only permitted within single-family residences. That change was made to be consistent with the short-term rental ordinance, which does not allow certificates to be issued for multifamily units or ADUs. Council may want to consider whether we would like to keep that applying only to single-family residences or whether there is an interest in allowing multifamily dwellings to receive a hosted rental permit. And that gets into equity considerations and whether there's a desire to allow full-time residents who live in multifamily units to have the opportunity to earn some additional income through a hosted rental. So with that, staff's recommendation tonight is to provide direction to staff regarding the bed and breakfast in or hosted rental policies and regulations. And happy to answer any questions. I do have a summary table, same as we had in the staff report, to help with deliberation as we walk through the discussion. Thanks.
Thank you, Hillary. Yeah, I was gonna say, maybe like the third or fourth to last slide is gonna be a good one as well as we, as we get into that. Yeah, something like this would be great. That's even better. Cool. Councilmember Romack, you get to start us off on this one because I think everybody else has had a chance, if my recording is correct. So go ahead.
That is fine. Hillary, you kind of mentioned it, and I think the staff report just spoke to a little bit of the challenges maybe staff have now if there is a violation of some of the current rules of enforcing it. Can you maybe speak to the magnitude of this issue? Are we talking multiple property owners? You're seeing various violations. Is it a handful of bad actors? Is it everybody? Just kind of trying to understand.
Yeah, I'll speak to it in general terms, and then Danielle may want to jump in as well because most of them are actually under community development versus under sort of my shop. It is a small number. Again, we only have 26 properties registered, so that in itself is a pretty small pool. So the number where we've had repeat violations is in the single digits, I would say, is closer to four to five, where we've had sort of some of these ongoing challenges that have taken significance or staff time and effort to address. Danielle, do you have anything else to add, or does that seem accurate?
No, that's right.
And I think you kind of mentioned in your presentation seen people with the STR, increased fines for the STR violations, that people have maybe taken those a little bit more seriously. So that's kind of one of the reasons why increasing the fines might be a good idea in staff's opinion.
That's correct. The two things within the short-term rental ordinance that help bring people into compliance is the significant fines that they could incur, and then also the potential of suspension or loss of a certificate if you are in repeat violation. Neither of those are the case with hosted rentals, and that has been part of the challenge.
And so, just making sure I have it right, currently, hosted rentals one-time register with the town. Do they pay any sort of fee, or it's just a registration?
There is no fee to register. All they pay now is transient occupancy tax and the T-Bid assessment.
And the staff's proposal is that it be $100 per year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that's just to cover the staff time to process the registration and for a small amount of enforcement and just oversight.
Councilmember Clifton. Councilmember Henderson.
I think just one question. So the kitchen access, this is really just the staff recommendation related to kitchen access is really just to ensure it's not operating basically as an ADU or JADU that would be in this sort of hosted rental situation.
Correct. And just to clarify, reiterate, the kitchen access requirement has already been changed. That was changed in 2022. So the question before council is just, do we require that all short-term rentals, even those registered before that date, comply? Or allow some to not comply because they were registered prior to that date? But the intent there, again, was to really narrow the definition to ensure that what is being rented is really just a single bedroom within a home that they have access to versus something else that has more the feel of an ADU or something else that's not just a bedroom.
And I know I said one question, but just one more. So I know right now, you said there's, you know, a few that kind of keep coming, coming back up. How do we know if these hosted rentals, like, it's still complaint-driven, right? So we're still getting them out of a complaint-driven process, just like our STRs?
The majority of challenges that we have are things that have been identified through advertisements or through others or code cases that have come up versus the complaint hotline. The calls we tend to get on the complaint hotline are things like noise complaints, parking, things like that. We have had minimal complaints on those actual sort of day-to-day operating standards. It's more on the space that's being rented and that it appears to be something beyond a single bedroom.
Okay, thanks.
Vice Mayor. So when you said there were four to five, were you saying four to five properties or four to five violations?
Four to five properties approximately that have had repeat violations.
Okay, and so about how many violations, Danielle or Hillary, total?
I'm looking to Danielle to see if you have that.
I didn't pull that before this meeting, but typically, if we get one violation on a property, it takes time to resolve that, and then we don't. Sometimes we get the same violation pop up again, but we kind of just wrap it under the same code case, so.
And then what are the violations? There are advertising violations predominantly?
Or how the space is being used. So that's the other issue that we're trying to figure out how to regulate through these changes.
In what respect?
That they're using them sometimes as, like, in combination with a short-term rental. It's kind of hard to explain. They just have a variety of issues that come up with them. Like, the space is, should be used as a hosted rental, but then it's hard for us to know if it's, like, the host is there, or... So there's just other things that popped up with it.
Just a couple other examples. We've had some where we determine through advertisement or other code cases, complaints we get, that the space that's being rented is not, does not up to code as a bedroom. So it's a storage space, converted corner of a garage. It's maybe a bedroom plus, you know, a bed in a place that's really not a bedroom, in a storage loft or something like that. We have had some where there may be a wet bar, and then the advertisement provides information that, you know, there's a hot plate and pots and pans and the coffee pot and the convection oven. So it's really more of providing additional facilities beyond what you might find in a bedroom. So those are the areas where we're really just seeking council direction on whether that's something that you would like staff to be regulating.
As a practical matter, why would we ban hot plates and wet bars? And plates?
Once we get into cooking facilities within a bedroom, then it moves sort of into the territory of a junior accessory dwelling unit. And council has provided direction not to permit junior accessory dwelling units to short-term rent. So it creates a bit of a loophole where somebody may be able to get a certificate under the hosted rental program where council has already determined that they do not want this type of unit to be able to short-term rent.
Now, on a bed and breakfast, they would, though, a landlord would be able to say you can have your own bathroom? You can use the bathroom down the hall?
They could have a shared bathroom, or they could have their own bathroom. It just depends on the layout of the house. That's not something that's regulated. They just need to have access to a bathroom.
In terms of registration, why one year instead of five years? Why not re-register after five years instead of every year?
That's something that could be considered. Under the short-term rental ordinance, what we found is having that annual process just allows the town to collect information, ensure that, you know, that they're sort of reconfirming that, yes, this is the bedroom that I am designated, designating for the hosted rental. We have the correct and current contact information on file, those types of things. But council could provide direction to have that be a longer period, whether it's three years, five years. I think we have flexibility.
Has staff ever considered requiring someone when they first register to go through an online education testing to make sure they understand what the rules are for their operation? Have them take an online test and then certify?
That's not something that we've considered. It's a great idea, something we could consider. We do have, you know, as part of it, we have sort of attestation that they need to sign the application saying that they understand certain requirements and are agreeing to comply with them for the STR program. comply with them for the STR program. But we don't have a training program per se right now, but we can take that into consideration.
Okay, and then on the advertising, it sounds like advertising's the biggest issue. They advertise for a, a room with a wet bar or a room?
I, I would say advertising is a big issue because it's a window into what is being offered.
Right, and I'm wondering what they're advertising that's common, what, what's commonly being advertised that's violating what rule?
Uh, sometimes their photos and things of the unit show that it is more than just a bedroom that's being offered, and sometimes it is things like additional cooking facilities that are within the bedroom.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Not a lot of questions, lots of comments. But my one question is, we're gonna change the name of this program to hosted rental and stop confusing it with bed and breakfast after, at whatever we decide tonight?
That is what staff are recommending.
Yes, that's gonna be really great. Uh, and then my only other question is, do we currently verify, we currently don't verify bedroom at all, whether it's through the building division and the plans of the house, there's no verification. Is that accurate?
That's correct. For hosted rentals, that's correct.
So not even a look at the, whatever's on file at the building department, for example?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, right now, you, all single-family homes have at least one bedroom, so what they are telling us is I would like to rent one of the bedrooms as a hosted rental. So if we did have more significant enforcement on that, we would look for details on what the bedroom is, probably some photos, things like that, and have some type of a verification process.
Got it. That was my next question. We're not really talking about sending the STR code compliance folks out to these houses to physically look at these bedrooms or houses. We'd be looking for building plan or house plan, site plan, whatever, mark out which bedroom it is you're renting, send us three pictures, that's what, that's what we're talking about.
Correct. That's where, that was, would be sort of the baseline requirement. We tend to only go out to the site if there is a specific violation or challenge to address.
Yep, understood. Great. Thank you for clarifying that. Of course you may. Please, go for it.
Have, in preparing these proposed regulations, did you look at any bed and breakfast regulations from any other resort towns?
Uh, we have in the past. I don't think we did with this sort of round of updates, but we have, in the past, we've looked at and been in touch with South Lake, Tahoe. We've, we typically have conversations with Placer County on their regulations and a few others, just to understand how they're handling that.
And South Lake Tahoe has a bed and breakfast or a hosted rental regulation?
They do have a hosted rental regulation, I believe. I don't think it pertains just to one bedroom, if I'm remembering correctly. It's more of a, it provides an exemption from the, they have limited neighborhoods where you can have a short-term rental, and the sort of full, full-time resident permit allows some flexibility with that, I believe.
Okay. And then just finally, why would, why are we switching from bed and breakfast to hosted rental?
The term bed and breakfast has tended to cause quite a bit of confusion because in sort of in common language, bed and breakfast is understood as a type of hotel, which is sort of a commercial facility with multiple rooms. So right now, we have bed and breakfast in, single-bedroom rentals as sort of a subset of bed and breakfast, and it's, it's quite confusing. So I think having a clearer term that's more understood under common language would be helpful.
I mean, we added that before we had the short-term rental ordinance specifically because we didn't have anything in place. And so that was the only logical place we could put it at the time, but now that we've evolved, it doesn't make sense to have it under bed and breakfast anymore.
Okay, so we essentially don't allow bed and breakfast in Truckee?
We do allow bed and breakfast.
What do we call them?
Bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast. They, they register.
This got meshed into it.
Yeah, so they're sort of a subset of hotels, so they also are required to collect transient occupancy tax and register under a hotel registration. These ones are under a different registration category.
Thank you.
That's, that's a long story. Yeah, okay. Uh, let's open this up for public comment. Come on up if you'd like to make a comment. Thank you for your patience this evening. We know you've been sitting here a while. Three minutes. Again, buzzer doesn't work. I'll interrupt you if I have to. But it works now? What's that? Oh, you fixed it. So it does work now. Excellent.
Hi, councilmembers. Thank you for your service. I just have, we have one of these hosted rentals, and we've had it for eight years. We've never had a violation or a complaint. And we built our house eight years ago, and it does have a little sink in it. And we were concerned that if we, with the new rule, that we would have to remove the sink, and we feel like that would make our place less desirable. It has a little sink in it. We've lived here about 50 years. We've, um, it's a part of our retirement plan, and we are getting older, and we would just hope that the rule for, if, if you do implement the new rules, that maybe we'd be grandfathered in for keeping the sink so we wouldn't, wouldn't have to remove it. And we're happy with all the other rules you want to implement, and thank you.
Your name for the record.
Oh, I'm Christine Hinkle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on this one? No? Okay. Hello? Yes?
But good thing you have three minutes.
You get your own three minutes.
Hi, I'm, I'm Paul Combs, and thanks for everybody being here. We really appreciate living in Truckee and having a great opportunity like this to meet in a public space. I, I just wanted to add on to what my wife said, in, in terms of the removal of the sink, that's gonna change the floor plan in, in the bedroom, and it's gonna be somewhat of an expense. The other thing that I find interesting to me is that the, um, and I wasn't aware of all these other violations, and, and to me, what I've heard from the staff was, it, it seems like it's more of trying to make things consistent rather than responding to any individual problems. And so, so that's just my perspective on it. So anyway, that, thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Yeah. Any other public comment? Okay. I'm gonna close public comment, bring it back to council for deliberation. I do want to just mention, yes, I have opinions, I'll wait to the end. The only things that I think we're not seeing on here, one of the questions before us is to grandfather, grandfather-in-or-not kitchen access, basically. I think that is one of the major questions that certainly came up in public comment, both in person here and via all the public comment we got ahead of time, and, and thank you to all of those who provided public comment ahead of time as well. We did have a chance to review all those. And I think that was the only one, I think that designated, oh, you have permitted bedroom review on there as well. So I think it's just the grandfathered kitchens. Is that the only one that we're missing from this list in front of us?
I think so, yes. Sorry for that omission. I can quickly add that one in while we deliberate.
No worries. Thank you, Hillary. Great. Uh, councilmember Romack, let's hear it.
Thank you. Um, yeah, appreciate staff's report and appreciate all the public comments we received, you know, numerous in advance. And I was reflecting on, you know, why we put the STR ordinance into place, and, because I think to the comment, you know, are we trying to bring it up to the same standard? What is the purpose of this? And I really saw the STR ordinance, the reasoning being nuisance, safety, as well as helping support our housing stock in our community. So I think just the first point is, I, I think every single comment we heard from, and as per regulations, you have to be a permanent resident to be able to do this. You have to live in your house and long-term rent. So I think just from that aspect, this is an opportunity to help more people who live here be able to afford to live here. So not making this more burdensome on folks to be able to afford to live here is important to be thinking about. I think nuisance issues was another reason we did our STR ordinance, and, you know, we heard from a lot of folks of neighborhood issues with noise and trash. And what I've heard is we're not hearing that at all from these, so that is not a problem. I think it's probably due to the fact, there's probably other, you know, the homeowners in the house, so you're being, you know, a little bit more respectful or understanding. And then the last piece is safety, and I think that is the one piece I heard of, you know, not having appropriate access in bedrooms and egress and, and things like that. So I think in looking at this, it makes sense in my thought process that, you know, to require some of that, you know, bedroom, you know, checks, you know, some of the things we just talked about to ensure that what should be available is available to people. So I think from a safety perspective, doing that. The wet bar sink issue, I definitely feel like we should grandfather in folks. It seems, doesn't seem to make any sense to folks that had those in place beforehand. I'm still struggling a little bit of wet bar sink is not the same as a cooking facility too, so I, I know I heard it's in our development code, but that also, most hotels nowadays, you have a refrigerator and a sink, so I, I don't really see a problem with that moving forward, but I think at this point, it's grandfathering in the folks that already have them. And then I think I would be open to allowing them in multifamily units. Again, the reason we prohibit STRs and multifamily units is because we want to protect more of those opportunities for our local, long-term workforce. And so again, you have to be a local to be doing a hosted rental, so I think it would be okay to allow it in multifamily. Vice Mayor Zabriski, I, your question on rather than yearly, should it be a longer registration potential? I would support that. I, I think once we know that these are safe dwelling units with the appropriate egress and they fit the codes, I don't think we should have to make them re-register every year, so a three-year, five-year term makes sense. And then finally, I would support increasing the fines. I, you know, I did hear too, that has been a mechanism to ensure people are following the rules, so I am open to increasing the fines for people who are violating. So again, the four or five bad actors that are not following the rules are punished and have to pay a fine, and the folks that are not can continue to operate. I think I covered most of that?
You nailed it.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you. Councilmember Clifton.
Um, the only other thing I was wondering about in terms of this list was the one-year waiting period. Is that something you, staff is not recommending that we include that in here?
That's a great question. Yes, so just as a reminder for community members, under the short-term rental ordinance, after a property changes hands, so if you're a new buyer, you need to wait one full year before you're able to begin the registration process. Staff have not recommended that. I guess that should be on the list as well for consideration, partly because, again, this is a tool that is often used to help with the affordability of home ownership. So recognizing that for many sort of first-time homebuyers, this may be something that they are relying on to be able to cover the costs of ownership.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, so I, I too want to express, express my appreciation for the public comment that we received on this item. The specificity in the, and the detail of the individual circumstances for the rented, or rental hosts was very helpful, and I think definitely has informed some of our discussion here tonight. So thanks to everybody that took the time to do that. I, I definitely want to support our community in being able to host our visitors and support their standard of living, and I think this fits that bill nicely. However, equity and consistency is important to me, and so I think this regulation helps us deliver in that, in that realm. I'm, I am totally fine with grandfathering in the sinks and wet bars pre-2022. I think that just makes sense. I, I definitely want to see the fines higher than the base that they are now, but I don't think that it would be equitable, again, in that equitable standpoint, to, to make them equal to an STR rental, just because the ability to earn, the, the level, level of earnings is lower than an STR. So I'm interested in hearing from my fellow councilmembers where they would land on that. Multi-dwelling units, or multifamily dwelling units, I think this is an appropriate use for those. Again, everybody has a different standard of living, and those might be accessible to some people, but only with a little assistance, so I would love to open up that opportunity to them. And, and I'm, the other thing that maybe we could, we could discuss a little further is the keeping kitchen access. I, I would prefer to keep that at the discretion of the rental hosts, but I'm also interested in hearing my fellow councilmembers' opinions on that. I think that should be a personal choice, depending upon how their house is set up and other individuals and things like that. There was a lot of discussion of that, about that in our public comment as well. So that's where I am with that, and I don't think we need to do a one-year.
Did you care about the registration fee?
Annual registration. I, I actually would prefer to see it annually. We have, the one thing that we've seen multiple times is people missing their registration in STRs, and then it's very difficult to get back into it. I, we don't, we probably don't have that situation here because we don't have a limit on these, unless we're going to discuss a limit of these, which we're not currently. So I, I would be okay with a longer than a year, but I do think we need to have that consistent registry or registration so that we can validate the information.
Great. Thank you. Excuse me. I think we went to you next. I don't remember either. Councilmember Henderson, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I think councilmember Romack said so many of the things that I, I was going to say, so thank you. I, I was just jotting down a few notes. I, I feel like we're getting precariously close to over-regulating without actual challenges within the community itself. With STRs, it was really, really different. There were so many complaints that we received here at Town Hall, I mean, constantly. It was a community issue, it was a community challenge. This really is not the case here. I, I sort of have to step back and ask myself, what problems are we actually solving for our community with this policy? I'm not in favor of more policies and regulations to solve problems that are relatively small in magnitude and that are centered here in Town Hall, not centered within the community itself. Um, it's so different from STRs that I don't even know if we should be making that comparison, quite frankly. The fine structures with STRs were used specifically to reduce those complaints because it's a complaint-driven process. We don't have many complaints here at all. I do agree, supporting hosted rentals as an allowable use in multifamily for all of the reasons that you both already said. Let's see, what else? Cooking facilities, you know, I understand it could present a loophole within our STR ordinance, and I certainly don't want that. But that said, again, it just feels like we're, we're maybe solving something that we don't have a big problem with. So whether it's grandfathering in or whatever that approach is, I'm comfortable with. What did I not hit on that I needed to hit on?
I think you hit on most everything, maybe just registration fee?
Um.
And what? Yeah, and, yeah, registration fee being annual, being A, anything, B, annual, C, more than annual. Choose A, B, or C.
I don't know if I feel strongly, honestly, on sort of the cadence of what that should be. I think it would be good to, just so we know how many are out there, we need to have some sort of a registration process. I don't feel strongly on whether it's annual or every two years, or, I really don't.
Great. Thank you. And, and maybe just before you go, quickly, Vice Mayor Zabriski, are we also, basically if we change this, are we pulling this out of community development regardless, and is hosted rental going to be a new thing under short-term rental, or is it gonna remain split? I don't think we asked that question.
Um, I guess I'll answer that in two ways. What staff would propose is in the code, we would move this over into the
Or is it going to remain split? I don't think we asked that question.
I guess I'll answer that in two ways. What staff would propose is in the code, we would move this over into the chapter on short-term rentals and just, and that's sort of the framework we use of, let's talk about what we already have for short-term rentals, what things would you like to apply, what things would you not like to apply. So taking it out of the development code, putting it over in that chapter. In terms of enforcement, it's always is a, is a bit of a collaborative process, so that would continue.
Yeah, okay.
The registration process would be under short-term rentals.
I think for clarity, and I don't want to speak for all of us, but I, I would agree, and you can nod your head, like moving this into the short-term rental chapter is sort of, I think, all of our goals. And that's even why staff was bringing this to us to begin with. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, Vice Mayor Zabriski, go ahead.
I agree with what my other council members said, including agreeing with, agreeing with me. So I read, I read the comments, the landlord comments, and they tend to affirm my personal experience, I guess with bed and breakfast, not hosted rentals, but in California, Europe, and South America, they all struck me as being really different from an STR, which I've heard from other people here. My colleagues feel the same way. Your experience are just recognition. I really see hosted rentals as being completely different and having to share the same roof with the owner, I think is a good damper on misbehavior. So not to belabor the point, I'm, I'm looking for, what are we trying to cure? And it sounds like it's something, advertising, and then we're seeing maybe spaces aren't up to code. Well, if they're not up to code, it's a code violation, let's enforce the code. So it's, I'm having a hard time finding a problem for the solution that's being proposed. On the one thing, I guess on fines, actually, I can't remember what the code compliance fines are, but, but I'm fine with it.
500, 100, 200, 500 versus 1500, 3,000, 5,000. Oh, there it is. Thank you, Hillary.
Yeah, I'd be happy, I think I'd be happy just sticking with the code compliance, but I could, at the same time, I'm hearing from other people, they don't want to go up to the STR fine, but they do want to see an increase. I'm okay with that. On the registration, I, I was asking about five years because what I'm looking for is a minimal burden on the landlords. And one-year renewal, if it's simple and fast, I'm even less concerned. But I want to make it easy for them. It's just a matter of keeping a record of the registration. And I think five years is good enough, but I, it's not a strong point for me. Now, is there anything else you wanted to ask me about? I think fines.
What about multifamily, allowing for a hosted rental in a multifamily?
I would allow that. I do see that helping renters stay, the renter who's paying the rent staying in their apartment.
Yep, absolutely. I think you answered everything. Grandfathering in the folks who have the wet bars and sinks and such.
I would allow, I would allow them to allow wet bars to go into the new ones.
You would? Yep, great. Although that might take planning and just a little bit of code adjustment, but I know they can do it. Okay, are you good?
Yeah.
I think you hit everything.
I'm looking for a reason to have a regulation and I'm not seeing enough of a reason for most of these.
Yeah, absolutely. Appreciate that. Appreciate everybody's comments up here. And again, the public comment that came in, similar to Councilmember Romack, my lens is sort of twofold, life safety and housing affordability, which I think we've all basically touched on to some extent. I think we have consensus and I agree with that consensus. So staff, I think allowing it in multifamily, I think we have consensus on, on grandfathering in the wet bar and sink. And I think we also, I have heard consensus from at least three of us, Romack, Vice Mayor Zabriski, and myself. I think you were not quite comfortable with it, but allowing wet bar and sink moving forward as well. You're not in favor of that. Where did you quite land on that?
I'm okay grandfathering it in.
But not forward.
Yeah, I think it does. There is a loophole with our STR regulation and just, it was really, I just want to say it was really clear in our STR regulation ordinance and that whole process, which was a many-month process, that we don't want ADUs or JADUs to be short-term rented.
Yeah, and to me, a wet bar and sink is still not a JADU. Correct me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong?
Sorry, ask that again, if it's a bar sink.
Would a wet bar, if a wet bar and/or sink existed in a bedroom, does that then qualify it as a JADU?
You can, you can do that with a hot plate. So yeah, you're getting pretty much at that threshold of a JADU.
You are getting to a JADU.
Yeah, because it's a bedroom conversion.
Maybe I'm not willing to have that conversation right now, but I know we're going to be reviewing the short-term rental regulations within a year potentially. And maybe we bring that back as part of a bigger package and how we want to handle that. So I'll pause on that one as well, but I'm definitely in favor of grandfathering in where we are today. I'm not in favor of any registration fee personally. I did hear, I think consensus for minimum of three years, maybe even up to five is sort of what I heard. So 100 bucks every three to five years. I'm pretty sure we heard consensus on that from at least Councilmember Romack, Zabriski. You wanted annually and you were okay with three to five years or you wanted annually?
I don't have a strong feeling on this one.
Okay, so 100 bucks, somewhere in the three to five-year range, and allowing multifamily. As far as the fines go, what was our first fine structure? I believe it was like 500, 1,000, 1,500 when we first launched this program.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah, so I was going to maybe propose something where, you know, first violation is free, like, and that you have the opportunity to cure. And then if there's a second violation, you move into like the old fine structure, the 500,000, 1,500.
To clarify for, for many things, for example, with advertising issue, we would give a warning anyway. So it essentially is first violation is free.
So I'd be in favor of, of something along those lines. I do think we, you know, the issue why staff has brought it to us is they're having trouble enforcing the couple of bad actors, right? And I think just to also be clear, this was not necessarily a council priority. This was a little bit more of a staff priority when it came to us, which is the other reason why we're hearing it is, is they have these discrepancies that we're trying to clarify. Is everybody sort of comfortable with warning 500,000, 1,500s type of structure?
Are these maximums?
They are maximums.
They would be maximums.
I'm just thinking back to Thomasello, that was my big rub. We went right to the maximum. Ended up at $4,500, but if it's up to a certain amount, then we should be able to appropriately weigh the nature of the violation.
That was because the first few violations weren't remedied, which is how we got to the 4,500. Let's, yeah, so.
And just to clarify, anyone could obviously appeal.
Always appeal. Same appeal process. I think what we're basically doing is we're taking this out of community development, we're moving it into the STR chapter, process, all of that becomes a little bit more clear, becomes a little bit easier for staff to manage, and it becomes a little bit easier for us to explain, understand, deal with appeals, things like that. That's the end goal of why this is before us, so.
Correct. Just to make sure I captured that correctly, I think what we heard is warning where appropriate and then 500, 1,500, 3,000?
No, no, 500,000, 1,500.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And, and again, I guess where I'm going with this is sort of like a stopgap mechanism until we do a more thorough short-term rental update, which, you know, we'll have a chance, should we so decide, to revisit this if we want to, if for example, something's not working or, you know, it's, it's not working for staff. So that's where I would say this is really about a year, because I think the short-term rental update is, is looking to about a year from now. Is that accurate, staff?
Correct.
Yeah, great. Any other direction that we have not answered for you at this point? I think we hit everything. I think we were all fine with onsite management, proof of residence, maximum occupancy.
But a maximum occupancy, we're good with?
Yeah, two plus.
Children.
Children, basically. Parking, I think we're okay with advertisements, agreed. The permitted bedroom review, that's a life safety issue, which we all thought was important. Currently, ADUs and JADUs will stay prohibited and multifamily dwellings will change and kitchens will be grandfathered in.
Great. I think we got, what about kitchen access? I think I heard at least one.
I'm also comfortable without requiring kitchen access. I agree with some of the public commenters. I believe I heard that from Councilmember. Yeah, leave it to the host. I mean, people can self-select, they book it or not, whether they have kitchen access. It's not our job to say, you get kitchen access, that's, we don't care, right? Yeah, okay. So kitchen access, not required.
Okay. I think we have the direction we need, so staff will work on putting together draft ordinance to bring back to council.
Thank you. That was clean and easy. We appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you for this chart. Always helpful. Okay, I think we made it. We are on to council member reports. Is anybody ready? Go ahead. Yeah.
R2SC, you already heard all about that. I also attended the Truckee-Nortau Transportation Management Association meeting last week along with Vice Mayor Zabriski. There were presentations from Placer County Transportation Planning Agency and the TRPA on some of their bigger plans. And then also attended the Unmet Transit Needs Workshop with NCTC and PCTPA after that, again, where people were just discussing additional transit needs in our region. And the, all the ideas that were brought up are things that we have heard before. That's it.
Councilmember Clivstad.
So enjoyed the candidate forums. Those were pretty interesting. Hope other people watched them at home. If not, you can always see them on Truckee Tahoe Media. Enjoyed the Truckee Wine Walk. It was a gorgeous day and I think they raised a lot of money for this, this year benefiting the Tahoe Food Hub. And then I want to acknowledge the letter we received from Sierra Watch regarding the Palisades Tahoe development. I'm, I was very pleased with staff's letter that they drafted as comment to that and, and feel that that's the, that's the best way that we can provide our input. But I wanted to raise that issue in case there were fellow council members that wanted to consider their request for a resolution.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Councilmember Romack, you don't need us to go back to you at this point on that. Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Henderson.
Okay, mine's really short because I'm recovering from knee surgery. So I went to the second night of the candidate forums and watched the first night. And I, I just want to say that everyone who has stepped up to run in our local elections this season, whether they end up getting elected or not, really does deserve to be congratulated. We've all been there. We all know how incredibly hard it is to put yourself out there in front of everyone and to open yourself up to that criticism. And I really just hope that our entire community, as we get closer to the actual election with not that many days left, that, that as a community, we really uphold our boundaries around civility and making sure that our local campaigns are civil, because the folks who have stepped up, it truly is a really, really hard thing to do. That's it.
So I attended the Truckee River Basin Watershed Group meeting. What came out of that is lake levels and outlets from our surrounding reservoirs are pretty much going to track what happened last year for the next two months. The LAFCO, that's the Local Agency Formation Commission, received the report on the municipal services review for all the fire districts in Nevada County. That's where LAFCO looks at the financial ability and service adequacy of these agencies. And in the case of the fire districts, they found that there's an uneven allocation across the county of revenue, service inadequacy across the county. On the western side, they're strongly recommending that the fire districts consolidate in part to improve services and financing. Looking at the Truckee Fire District, I learned that the Truckee Fire District is sitting much better financially due to a couple of circumstances that are almost serendipity. The allocation of funds is based on the 1978 allocation when the Prop 13 was passed. At that time, our fire district had employees, was employed firefighters. Most of the other fire districts had volunteers. Therefore, the Truckee Fire District has continuously received much more money in comparison to the other fire districts. On top of that, this is the only fire district that crosses a county line, so it's exempt from the ARAF shift, which is an educational extractions, an extraction of funds from the property tax to fund public schools under state law. So that's good for us. An interesting thing about the fire district is they do not have a response time standard. And so it's been recommended they establish a standard for responding to calls. And then the fire district reported that the facilities need upgrades. They average, I think, two people, or maybe it's one, per, per vehicle, per unit. And the recommendation is three and certainly two's the, the minimum. So they're definitely understaffed. And then you heard about the river revitalization. I'd just be repeating what you already heard to go over that. I met with David Mercer, who's at his sawmill, the Klondike Sawmill, to understand that better and get a better understanding of what the impact might be on the town of Truckee. I was actually interested of what the economic benefit might be in terms of employment and synergies, in terms of their lumber products and chips. And apparently, starting out, the sawmill is going to be shipping most of their stuff under contract to Oregon and Washington. But maybe someday it can evolve to some partnership with our Tahoe Truckee Lumber or other local suppliers or artisans for the, a greater benefit for our community.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, Councilmember Henderson just made me realize that I would like to make a plea to our community. Not only is it difficult to put your name in the hat to run for any type of public office, but you have to raise money to do so. And part of that money goes to buying campaign signs. And we have, we have many of them up in town. And you, you could share your thoughts on this too. And I know it's not fun and I don't enjoy them either, but we only have a few more weeks. And please just be respectful because people work hard to raise that money to buy those signs. Please don't take their signs. They, they serve a purpose and they will be gone right after Election Day. And we just want to support our fellow community members that had, have taken this really big and difficult step to participate in the public election process. So thank you very much for your patience and I appreciate your consideration of others.
I had that public service announcement on my list as well. So you nailed it, all good. I will let you, let you have that one. Just a couple of reports from myself. We had the Truckee Tourism and Visioning Session about a week or so ago, put on by, put on by Visit Truckee Tahoe with our consultant who was out of Whistler. Lots of town staff was there, tons of different folks representing different interests. It was a half-day session, starting to inform a long-term strategic tourism plan that VTT will be working on over the coming six to 12 months. Really well-attended, really great information, really great perceptions. And there was a little voting session and we had all of these things, you know, historic, authentic historic downtown, proximity to lake, proximity to ski resorts. And, and of course, because the room was quite weighted, Truckee basically finished and I think in first place or second place on, on all of these rankings. So we, we at least those who live here think we're a great place to live. And that was a really interesting session. a really interesting session. The only other thing, I have met with a couple of developers interested in taking part in some of our new housing programs, so potentially looking at some larger token, STR token program participants, other folks interested in the developer deed restriction program. So I think we're really, just wanted to express that we're starting to gain some ground there, we're starting to see some great interest, and we're starting to have people who are having conversations about taking advantage of those and putting in place all of the things that we've been talking about and policies that we've been planning. Other than that, that's all from me. Our next meeting is on October 22nd, and we have no closed session, so we're adjourned to...
Shout out to the audience.
To the, we can't shout out. Yeah. Thank you, Travis.